Okay, Verizon time has it at 3 o'clock, which is the appointed hour to begin our monthly Board of Supervisors meeting. And I'd like to ask Mr. Jesse if he would open the meeting with prayer, followed by Matt Walker leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's have our heads in prayer. Still have any followers? I'd like to thank you for your many blessings, dear Lord, waking them up this morning and letting them see another day, dear Lord. And let's pray for our servants, men and women overseas, help keep them out of harm's way. And let's pray for this nation, dear Lord, and let us make wise and just decisions as we conduct county business. Amen.
Amen. Would all citizens of our country rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again this month, it's nice to see a large contingency of citizens wanting to take part in their county's government. And as always, I welcome you to the meeting. Would also like to welcome Mr. Bob Westbrook from the Lancaster County Board of Supervisors, who's working with us on airport issues. Bob, you can raise your hand, let people see who you are.
And just for the citizen's edification, we have checked his paperwork there. It's an order, he's got to be.
He paid his toll?
Yeah.
Can you hand your microphone over to him?
Alrighty. First order of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Under dispersments, we do have an additional sheet of dispersments that were necessitated as a result of Wings and Wheels, and they did not get in your packet. We do not wish these people to have to wait for their money, so we'd like to include that in the approval of dispersments. Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the additions.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. At this point, we'd like to open the meeting to public comments. As a reminder, three minutes per speaker unless you're representing four or more. Please address your comments to the board. Come up and give your name and address, please. First citizen, please.
Good afternoon to the Board of Supervisors. My name is Louis Bray. And I'm from 1034 Hayless Road, Locust Hill, Virginia. I see where this Board of Supervisor have trying to put more money down into Deltaville. I saw where they approved of trying to get this grant approved and put a bike trail in there. It's fine, but you, Deltaville is gonna get water now, and you catching the devil trying to get easement. You gonna have the same thing with this bike trail, 'cause matter of fact, I was in there one time before it had come up, and it fell in because of the easement. But let me tell you something, and I hope I don't have to tell you but one time. We people of Locust Hill pay taxes too. And down at Locust Hill, we need wider turn lanes. That store down there is a mess. You got traffic coming. I don't have to tell you, 'cause some of you come in that store, Wayne had been in it, Matt Walker had been in it, you see the congestion around that store. We need a grant to fix that place up and make that road better. You gotta pull out in the highway to see traffic, and you gotta trash your turn lane, and those buildings over there that, where they are working out of, when they go back with the lawn mowers and stuff on the trailer, they gotta swing out to go in. Those turn, it should've been a turn lane put in there from the get-go, 'cause those buildings, the size of the building, call for a turn lane. And I don't know how you broke your code and got by with it, I just don't know. But if I go back and look into your books, I could find some discrepancy. Those are your code. They were broken to have these buildings put over. There's a lot of more things around Locust Hill that need to be fixed up. And I talked with Kathy Swinehut, and we had a long conversation. And I hope y'all work diligent with her and trying to straighten some of these things. You know what's going on, and stop sending all this money to Deltaville, and it's hard to get easement down there. 'Cause they gonna, it gonna be the next four or five years if you get water down there before you get these easements straight. So just think and come down there. I don't, I mean, I'm here telling you this, but all you have to do is just come down and look for yourself. And I know you have, but let's try to straighten up the county and other places than Deltaville. And we need it. Like I say, you're putting too much in one place and not enough in other place. We all gonna live here together, so share the wealth. Deltaville is rich. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen, please.
Hi, Lud Kimbrough from 107 Kennard Lane in Deltaville. Last month, I brought to your attention that the ASMFC has determined that rockfish are currently overfished and overfishing is occurring, and that the VMRC had approved emergency regulations that will limit recreational fishermen to a single fish. Apparently misread my notes and said between 20 and 26 inches, I should've said 20 and 36 inches, but nevertheless, one fish instead of two. Regulation is now finalized, and Maryland continues to allow two fish this fall, so we can expect to lose business in Middlesex as fishermen target the Potomac and Maryland waters by shifting north for their recreation. As an example, this morning, I got an email from a charter captain promoting his business, who announced to his customers, "This fall, we'll be fishing out of Smith Point to try and spend more time in the Potomac or Maryland waters to get the chance at two fish per person." Last month, I briefly mentioned the need for this board to take a position on the Men Hayden fishery. Since that time, Omega Protein, which harvests 70% of the coastwide Men Hayden catch, has basically told the ASMFC to pound sand with its harvest cap on Men Hayden in the Chesapeake Bay. Omega previously made a commitment to comply with the 51,000 metric ton catch limit of the ASMFC in the bay, but notified the public on September 12th that it is deliberately exceeding that limit this year. Their excuse was the Atlantic was a bit rough, and it was easier to fish in the bay. In a research report by the Theodore Roosevelt Conservation Partnership, it was found that localized depletion of Men Hayden in the Chesapeake Bay could be responsible for as much as a 30% decline in rockfish. The Virginia Legislature's not yet had the spine to stand up to Omega, which currently spends $100,000 per year lobbying that body, and has spent as much as $1.1 million in one year, 2009, in its lobbying. The Virginia Saltwater Sport Fishing Association has drafted a letter to Governor Northam urging immediate action to bring Virginia into compliance with the ASMFC regulations and actively work to get real regulation, just like other fish species, with the VMRC rather than the legislature. I'm providing a copy of this letter to you today by email, and have a hard copy for our recording secretary. Together with the hundreds of sport fishermen who frequent our county and the businesses that depend on this sport, I urge this board to send a similar letter to the governor and our delegate and our state senator in an effort to save our critically important sport fishing industry in Middlesex. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen, please.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Harold Muller. I live in Kilmer's Point, Middlesex County. Last month, when I was here, I talked about the middle school, Middlesex School bus garage and its move. I wanted to make sure that my information was correct on that move, that no one really knew how much it was going to cost. I spent about two hours with Dr. Gretz, and we discussed this thoroughly. And I told Dr. Gretz that this was an opportunity for him to win-win on both sides, because as a citizen, we need to know that you're making your judgments about spending the tax dollars of a citizen prudently and doing good stewardship. No one could, the justification for doing it, according to Dr. Gretz, was that every other school district in the state had their own school bus garage. And as I told Dr. Gretz, I wasn't there to dictate an outsourcing of those services or moving the garage, but as a taxpayer, we at least deserve to have an analysis done, because you're starting at ground zero. You're building a new building, you're moving and buying new equipment, and how does that cost justified against outsourcing those services? He said it was more than a 45-minute job to do that analysis. Well, I know damn well it's more than 45 minutes, 'cause I've done analyses like that. The second thing I did was read your lease for the property to the Housing and Development Authority. A 60-year lease for $60, with the ability to sublet if the board associates fit. When this was first started, it was going to be done so that the low-income teachers could have a place that they could afford to rent, the deputy sheriffs. Our teachers make too much money to be, to acquire the low-income housing, so they're out of the picture. Our deputies all have housing, so now we've opened it up to other jurisdictions according to the lease, so that they can come over here and use it. So our taxpayers will be paying benefit to other localities for their teachers or whomever it is to reside within that environment. I look over at all the spending, and the spending. And as a salesman, I was told one time, "It's easy as the devil to sell if you just give it away, if it doesn't cost anything." We're spending money, taxpayer dollars, the properties that we belong to, we're giving the YMCA, the property down there, we'll probably still donate another $50,000 a year to them after giving them the property. And where does it end? When do you look at what's happening to the taxpayer out here? I'm not gonna go over my three minutes, because it's not gonna do it, but thank you all very much.
Thank you, Hal. Next citizen, please.
Hi, I'm Linda Muller from Kilmer's Point. Hal ran out of time, and I'm just bringing up a thought that he came up with. It's not fully fleshed out, but I think it's an idea that's worth considering about our junk or unlicensed vehicles in the county. He suggested, "Let's let everybody have one vehicle that's unlicensed, they need it for parts or whatever they need it for, and beyond that, consider a fee that they have to pay to the county, $50, $100 a year to have a vehicle, give them a little piece of paper, a tag or whatever that they have to display on that unlicensed vehicle." If you think the idea has some merit, feel free to talk to Hal and flesh it out further, 'cause that's about as far as I got with him today, but I wanted to mention it. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Next citizen, please. All right, don't see anybody queuing up, so at this point, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and move on to the reports from the constitutional officers. And first on deck is Sheriff Bushy. Dave?
Good afternoon. Once again, it's that time of year where we come in and we completed our Virginia rules that you guys support, and we have a five-minute video to share with you, like we have done in the past. It was our fourth year doing this, and it was, once again, very successful. Some of you all came out and met with the children that were there. And before we get done, get to the video, you know, when we started this, I asked my deputies to come up with ideas on how to support their community, and I have to give a lot of credit to Melinda Hart, because she's the one that brought this to us. And she wants to come up and say a few words, if you don't mind.
Great. All right, Melinda.
Thank you, Sheriff, so Chairman and Board members. This is the article that we would like to put in the South Side Sentinel next week. Middlesex County Sheriff's Office, Virginia Rules Camp 2019. Middlesex County Sheriff's Office held its fourth annual summer camp on August 26th to the 30th at Camp Pinkton-Hartfield. Thanks to Sheriff David D. P. Bushy and the Middlesex County Board of Supervisors, we were able to host 45 youth from our community. The Virginia Rules Program regulated through the State Attorney General's Office as a program to educate youth about juvenile laws and help them develop skills needed to make sound decisions, avoid breaking the law, and become active citizens in their communities and their schools. The laws taught this summer were technology in youth, shoplifting, prescription drugs, and trust and respect. The camp is not just about teaching the laws, it's an investment in our youth. Interaction with law enforcement, special guests, and community volunteers builds relationships with the youth in our community and creates a memory of a lifetime. When campers were not in class, they also enjoyed outdoor activities, which included swimming, canoeing, obstacle course, just to name a few. From local business owners to state and local agencies, the community came out in a tremendous support. Campers were given breakfast and lunch each day, as well as a pizza and a bonfire on Thursday night as they prepared for the overnight stay. With the many donations and fundraisers, the sheriff's office was able to send each camper home with a backpack filled with school supplies. For more information about the camp, please visit our, we have a Facebook page now with Virginia Rules on it. And with that being said, we do have a five-minute video for you.
This whole week, it's gonna be special because you get to learn juvenile law. You will learn laws, and you'll learn consequences, and you'll learn supports that are in the community that will empower you to make better decisions. I'm so thankful to Deputy Hart, Sheriff Bushy, and his staff for the wonderful partnership that we have with them. All right, thank you. Have a good weekend.
So we once again want to say thank you.
We thank you all.
We know next year, the school system has changed the way they're gonna start school early, so we lost the camp for this, and the school has announced that they're gonna go ahead and help us and do part of it next year at the school. So the educational part will be done at the school, and then the camp actually came in and said, responded back and said, "The part that the kids would do at the camp, they will allow us to get in there." So it's gonna be a little different, so we had a little exchange, 'cause we always had that camp available to us at the end of the summer season. Is that pretty much it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And once again, thank you for your part, and you're really helping these children. These children, I think it's important for law enforcement and all of us to be a part of their lives at that age, and hopefully that will make a lot of these young people to become better citizens in our community. Thank you.
All right, second item of business under the sheriff is in your board packet, pages 44 through 47, dealing with the proposal on animal control. I didn't know, Betty or Dave?
Yes, I think Betty's gonna make the, we did the proposal, and Betty's coming back to you with the...
I'll just have what dollars it would take to implement that.
To go forward. So I'm just here, I won't stay back, and if you have any questions. All right, Betty, thank you.
So using the sheriff's proposal of the cost that he proposed adding two new deputies, increasing current deputy salaries, increasing dispatcher salaries, I broke that down to a total for six months if we implemented this starting January 1. And then I removed what money I could from the current animal control budget, most of it in the part-time compensation line that had been set aside for a part-time animal control officer, and some vehicle maintenance and supplies, a little bit from uniforms. And if you deduct that from what the request is, it would require an additional $30,883 to implement in January. There's still a lot that would need to be done if we decide to do this. We'd still need to work on policies, work out medical transports, rabies clinics, things like that. But if you do decide to do this, it's almost either we increase the funds needed to get two, have two full-time animal control officers to allow the 24-hour coverage within the county budget, or we move those funds over to the sheriff's office to allow more than two animal control officers to cover county.
Ladies and gentlemen, we had the proposal, I believe, last month, and the question was, "What would the cost be?", and Betty has broken those costs down and given us what we would, what we need to see us to the next budget year. I think it's important to note that about 1,000 calls a year for animal control come in, and they all come through dispatch at the sheriff's office. It's a little bit obtuse the way that we've had to do it in the past. We've had a wonderful animal control officer who's done a great job for the county and been good to our animals, but for health reasons, he's unable to continue in the full-time capacity that he was in. So looking at the sheriff's proposal, just one person observing, if we're able, and I want to stay out of Hal Muller's throwing distance when I say something about spending money.
Yeah, get ready to spend some money.
Be careful. But if we're able to bolster the deputies' salaries for these additional duties and put two more people on the street, I think that this is a proposal very worthy of our serious consideration, and at this point, we'll just open the floor up to other discussion. Ladies and gentlemen.
No, I agree with you on that. I feel that, you know, it's needed, and it's a good idea to combine together, 'cause you're the sheriff department, and with what they're doing, and putting more officers on the road is always a plus for the community.
Mr. Chairman, I was impressed, and I appreciate Betty's work on this, that it's basically $28,000 in savings that she extracted from the current budget to apply to this. So for $30,000, if we can add the staffing, the deputies needed, I do think that this is something that citizens frequently have asked for more help with in terms of complaints relating to animals, and I think the overall plan of having all the deputies eventually trained to handle these calls makes sense. I do recognize it's hard, because we did pass a very tight budget, that we didn't put a lot into contingency, but I think we can probably figure this out, and it's, you know, I would advocate going forward with this. But I would like to see at an appropriate period from the sheriff, the number of calls that are animal-related, so we can see, you know, so that the number of calls that are animal-related don't get all combined in the data on just the other calls.
Keep segregating them.
Yes.
Okay.
So we know, you know, how effective and, you know, what the impact is, and have some measurement there.
Mr. Mansfield, any comment, any question?
I too like the idea of, I'm not quite sure I understand why we need two more part-time deputies to fill in. What, how did we come up with that number?
Sheriff?
How it came up, currently, there's a one full-time person and two part-time people, and for us to do it, if we just took what we have, it would even make us a lot thinner on the support side for the community with the deputies we have. So basically, we took that number and said, "How can we effectively do this and make it a full 24 hours a day?", and that's where we came up with the two deputies. And like I said, that's very conservative, because in most jurisdictions, like I said at the last meeting, it's, most of the other counties have anywhere for two to six deputies. So instead of doing full-time, then we figured out, we could train the other deputies, give them a little supplement, and get them trained, and then we don't have to hire more in the future. And to get back to your assessment for the, how we track, we can break it down for, 'cause we get cat calls too, but we don't do cat calls here. for, because we get cat calls too, but we don't do cat calls here in this county, but we can break down all animal breakdowns, because we have, actually, we go out, the other day, we had to go out and someone thought they had a rabid, uh, animal. And we could break all that down for you, how, so you could see each year what kind of calls they're being called out to. Okay? So, but that's how we came down to that number, how could we do it effectively and be professional about it? Because if you look in the other parts of the proposal, we would also be monitoring and helping the hunt clubs and all those kennel people, uh, making sure that they're taking care of these animals properly, and we would also be collecting your fees for the, uh, dog tags and that. So in order to do that, we would require two deputies plus the others.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Yes, sir. I think, Pete, um, at one meeting we had, I think we talked to someone that has done this in another county, and the, just the fees alone went up, I can't remember, was it forty, sixty percent?
It, it was substantial.
It was a high number that we're not getting right now. So you're gonna see people that are not paying their fees, we would back, actually be going out and making sure that they do have the licensing for their animals.
And, and that number isn't included?
We don't know exactly what that number's gonna be until we take it over and see where it's gonna go, but it will go up.
But it would, our cost would only go down.
That would offset the cost, yes.
It, it would.
Because we'd be collecting fees.
Sure.
Yes. And, and we're gonna do education, plus we're gonna be assisting the shelter and fundraisers and so on and so forth. Okay?
Good. Any other questions or comments?
No, I would like to, uh, make a motion that we do.
Have the sheriff's department take over animal control, less the shelter.
Yes.
Is that, thank you. Motion duly seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, so ordered. Ricky Warren, would you stand? Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. I didn't have thanks for me while I was there. Well, those counties have not worked really hard to build what we have today, and it's like losing my baby, I guess. But, uh, I know it's in good hands, so, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Sarah.
And we're not letting him go entirely, Mr. Chairman, he is staying with us as our shelter operator and manager, so.
Yes, sir. All right, moving right along, uh, item B is, uh, treasurer's report, Ms. Betty Bray, pages forty-eight through fifty-two. Thank y'all.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You've got my report, do you have any questions?
I have a question, but it's not specific to your report.
Okay.
We were doing some fairly in-depth expense analysis on the airport, and looking at the in-count things that the county was doing and putting values on it and so on and so forth, and we had a terrible time coming up with revenues and expenses that made sense. And somehow or another, out of the conversation, I got the feeling that we were behind in posting, is that, is that the case?
For the airport?
In your office, no, for, for posting in your office, for, for tax?
We are behind in our reconciliation, yes, working on May.
On May, is that?
Yes.
Because the?
We are behind.
Okay, is that common?
No, it's not, but this year was a bad year for us.
Okay.
When we lost Donna, and I was sick, my husband was sick, and Kathy had, his father got sick, and we just got behind.
Okay.
By the time I got another employee in, and we got her trained, and then that didn't work out, and it was down to Kathy and I trying to do everything, and it was tough.
Do we have, have a good outlook for getting caught up?
Yes, we're working on it, the two employees I've hired are very good, catching on fast, and we are steady going.
Thank you, ma'am.
Working good.
Any questions of the reporting that, uh, you have in your packet?
I'd just like to say thank you for this information, this is, this is a?
Do you understand this one?
A summary, yes, this is intended, it, it's clear, and it gives us, um, helpful information, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next up on deck is our commissioner of revenue, Ms. Bonnie Davenport, with a budget supplement request for a part-time employee, Bonnie, would you front and center? Oh, come on.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
What I was, what I'm asking for is a part-time person now, as opposed to the end of the year when I leave, because that is the time when everything starts, we get the cars to, um, price, we get the boats to price, and we do the, the business license and the meals tax, all that happens in January. And if a person, I mean, if you have a little bit, that person could mail out stuff, or whatever, do little things, or if she's a fast learner, she can do a lot, because we have the taxes, so we have so much, and two people are leaving at one time. And it's only one person in the real estate, and there'll be two in the front, so I do need that person part-time. And it's, it's a part-time person, it doesn't cost the county the, uh, hospitalization or anything like that, and it's thirteen dollars per hour.
And what was that calculated, roughly five thousand dollars or something for the balance of the year?
I gotta have it all written down, I don't know where I put it.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's not as much as a full-time person, who you do have to do the hospitalization and everything else, this is just a part-time person, because I've always had a part-time person.
My fellow board members, any questions to Ms. Davenport?
Nobody having a question, I'd like to read that motion.
I would like, I, I, I just wanted to go last, but I, I do have, Bonnie, you and I have had a, a couple of discussions on this, and one of my concerns was bringing on somebody so late, uh, and, and you've explained that, because we need to have somebody who's gonna hit the ground running first of the year. The other thing is that, um, where we approved a part-time person in the treasurer's office some time ago, there's gonna be continuity there, because the person who's running for treasurer is unopposed. In the case of your office, there is opposition, and obviously, until the ballots are counted, we don't know who is going to, uh, who's gonna win that position, and what their personnel desires or needs are gonna be.
They're gonna need that person, that's for sure.
Yeah, for the benefit of the public, would you elaborate on, uh, what either the person in your office or a new person would be facing personnel-wise, uh, at, on the first of January? Is that clear?
You mean, what that person be doing?
What would your, um, your right hand, who's running for?
Yeah.
Commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
Or a brand-new person coming in, what they'll be facing, what you think their desires will be with regards to personnel?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna, they won't, that, that person who's running against the deputy won't know anything as far as procedure, but if you have that part-time person in there, they will know. They will know, because that's what, we're gonna teach a fast, and it's a person who I know, and we don't have to advertise part-time. Deputies, we must, what you want, one day, you can advertise for that, but part-time?
So the normal employee hiring processes are more streamlined when you're hiring part-time as opposed to full-time or a deputy? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up on that? Because the part-time person that you're asking for is to be trained for a full-time person who's retiring also at the end of December?
No, the, the person who's leaving, when I leave, is a part-time person.
Okay, so it's a?
It won't be anymore, you know, it'll be just what it is. And you had suggested that that person can do it the first of the year, it's hard to teach when you have stuff flowing in and everything, so we would have been started, and it's the same thing, it's a part-time person now, or a part-time person in January, nothing's gonna, the money's gonna be the same.
But this is additional funding for a part-time position?
Well, it wouldn't, if I had someone come in to train, because you just, you told me, well, what, can Jean come in and teach her in January?
Right.
It would be the same that we're doing if I did it now.
Exactly.
It's the same thing.
Okay, and that's, that's what I was gonna suggest, that I, I do, I have a concern about adding a position, um, under your office when you're retiring in a couple of months and adding a position, and it seems to me that, and, that the person who's coming in should be able to add that position, so in, in other words, if we got this request in January, it would be coming from the new commissioner of revenue, and I, I think that would eliminate the concern. The other thing, I thought, well, perhaps that, um, Jean, or the part-time employee who's leaving, could continue into January, or, um, it might also be possible to advertise the position now, it's October, so that then, um, applications would be ready to go for anybody to hire at the beginning of January.
We try to beat that part of hiring, like, putting in the paper, that's costly, when you don't have to advertise, you don't advertise, and it's a part-time position, it's a position where you're not prone, you know, you don't have to, like, when you get a, a person, like a deputy, they have a certain length of time they promise to stay, or you get six months or whatever, but a part-time person, if that person doesn't work out, you can relieve them of their position. And it's gonna, it's, the money is not gonna be much different, because Jean has worked in the treasurer's office, my office upstairs, for forty, she's forty years, she's been here, all right? And she's tired, and she's, she doesn't wanna come back and teach anything.
In January?
No, she, she just?
One more month after?
She told me, no, you can't teach that much in one month, but you can do a few things in three months.
Okay. Um, and I, I do understand that, that you're not required to, required to, um, advertise for part-time, um, but I would advocate, um, that, you know, um, positions in this county that are paid for with taxpayer money, um, should be known to any, um, you know, appropriate candidate in the county, I, I just think that's good public policy. So it's out there that, um, you know, whether it's, uh, in the next few months, that there may be an opening in the commissioner of revenue's office for staffing, so I think it's important to have a broad reach when, um, you know, publicly funded positions are available.
You're right.
I think I have the same, uh, concern, Bonnie. I, I hate bringing somebody in as the person that is hiring them, is going out, if you, if you will, and?
I wouldn't, and I mean this, let me cut in, I would not hire anyone who could not do the job, believe me, because it's, it is so much going on in that office, you would not, I, I invited you a few years, well, some years ago, to come and sit and see what goes on in that office, and the person that I selected for this position, I was, I was like that, I was, it was from mouth to mouth that I, I was a planning commissioner, yeah, first, and then I became, I worked in the office part-time, and then full-time, and then I got elected to be.
I, I guess I'm, I'm speaking from, if I were the incoming, uh, new county?
But if you, if you?
I, I would like to, to be able to have a say in who the people that are in, going to be in my?
What, well, what this is doing is helping that person, who knows a lot, who can help the new person, but the, the other person got the job.
The, the other thing? The, the other thing, ma'am, that, that concerns me is, I don't, uh, I think I'm just repeating what Kathy just said, if we hire people, I don't think we should look that you only need to, to publish it one day or something, something like that, I think you really ought to, uh, to do it from the other end of the scale, and, and make certain that everybody that, that would like that position has, knows about it.
I have, I'd have people leave, because it was too much, they couldn't do the work, it's, it's a lot of work, it's tedious, you have no idea, but, and I think I'd be doing the new person, whomever, a treat, because this person would know and help. You know, I, I can't say anymore, I think it's a good idea.
Yes, ma'am, I, I, I under, I understand.
You know, uh, and the same, but if you post that, you get, you have to interview, it's a lot of work.
Bonnie, I think going to, not to paraphrase both of my fellow supervisors, but we are talking about spending a dollar or five thousand dollars or whatever of, of county money, taxpayers' money, and I too would like, and, and be sure that we have given any qualified candidate a chance to know about that opening, and I'm not trying to delay it, but?
Okay, you know what?
Even though it's not required, I like to go that extra step, Mr. Jackson?
Right, but I'm just saying, you gotta think about the integrity of Bonnie, Bonnie that's been working in that office for many a years, she probably knows somebody that can be on here, that can on the ground running, before she had to go and advertise and then interview all that time, she gonna need these people in now, so she can get these taxes out, and people can collect their money, and then see, now, we gonna sit back and say, hey, we gonna do your job, and she gonna have to, and, and somebody gonna have to interview anyway, but by her being here, she knows, she knows the people around, she knows somebody that can probably come in here, and I don't know who it is, but I'm just saying, on the ground running, get these taxes out, get them rolling in the first of the year, then if, 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 they gotta get somebody else, they will, but I'm thinking, you know, we gotta rely on Bonnie right now and tell first of the year, so she has to know somebody that wanna be on the ground running, because she's been here a long time, she says she's, she's experienced, she's probably been like that before, when she says she started up part-time and worked her way up, but yet, we wanna say, hey, now, let's wait till next year, so we can go ahead and put everything out and get somebody that you don't even really, probably may not be able to work out, but, and it's all depending on who you interview and who wins the election. So I think if, if for taxpayers', um, benefit, have somebody on running right now, go ahead and hire it up, and I think in the long run, it'd be better, but that's my opinion, but from what I'm looking at now, uh, it's, it, I don't have votes right here now, because they wanna wait till the first of the year, and she wants to get these bills out, because they gotta be out at a certain time, and you're gonna wait, you know, and then wait to get somebody in when everything is rolling, I mean, that little extra help will help out, get these bills, the bills gotta be paid.
Well, most of the income comes from the commissioner's office, if we don't get rolling, nothing will happen.
And the time is of the essence.
Yeah.
I, I seen where you're coming from, I'm getting out of your office.
I was gonna ask earlier, but I figured, you know, make the two salaries and, but I said, either way, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be harder on the people. If a person comes in in January or February, they're still gonna have to stop and teach, they're gonna have to look over, because it's really tedious, and people get upset when the real estate is wrong, if something's wrong, that they don't get the bill, or the bill goes to another person, because if you buy it in the middle of the year, it's in care of, and it goes to the original owner, so, there's a lot of things that goes on. So, that's it, I mean?
Well, Bonnie, I, you know, I appreciate everything you've done, uh, there, and as, as a commissioner of revenue, and, you know, sometimes people gotta go over harder, uh, loops than others, because you know, you know, and I, and I understand where you're coming from, but, and, uh, you know, I, I just hope that, you know, you get the help that you need.
Well, if I don't, I don't, it's just, I won't be here, so.
Right, right, but I, you're above saying, I appreciate the job you've done all the years you've been here.
Miss you, miss you, miss you.
One final question, is there any latitude in your office budget for this amount?
I don't know, I never, I don't go over it, only time I went over on that, when, um, I had to fire two, I hate to say that word, but other than that, my budget is pretty good.
I didn't mean to judge it good or bad, I just meant, is there, is there any?
No, no, I mean, I don't, I think I have enough, I'm not sure, I didn't, I didn't
So you might have enough to do it on your own without a budget supplement request?
You know what, I did not even think about that, I didn't have to come, I thought maybe, you know, I'm not talking to you guys before, but whatever.
Matt, Betty, can either one of you shed any light on what?
I don't think there's a lot of way in their budget to hire someone else.
All right.
You think, Matt?
I mean, there may have been some training or conference money that we could shift it around, but I think that's gonna depend, or is in process, so.
All right, Lane, I'm sorry I interrupted you with my questions, comments earlier, um, anybody else have any questions or comments of the commissioner of revenue?
Yes, sir.
Now, I'd just like to make a motion, that we appropriate supplement, supplement request, uh, amount of, uh, I guess it's right there, four thousand?
Four, four thousand?
Four thousand ninety-five dollars.
No, four thousand four hundred and eight dollars from the general fund.
From the general fund, four thousand four hundred and eight dollars from the general fund.
fund, that's my motion on the floor.
We have a motion, is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davenport. Moving on to agency and staff reports under VDOT, I see Joyce McGowan, but I see Ron, oh, I saw Ron back there, too. Joyce, welcome back, long time no see.
Good afternoon, it's good to be back.
Nice to have you back.
Back in this part of Virginia. I was spent a couple of months out in Bristol, way, way far away, and good to be back. Sounds like Ron and David took care of you guys, so that's good. You have your update, but I kinda will go through, I think there's a couple of things, just wanna make sure we were all on the same page. Under construction projects, we did finish Canoe House Road, so that your last unpaved road in the county that state maintained is done, so you don't have any more to go on the plan, so next year's secondary six-year plan, we will have to start maneuvering toward that piece that we've talked about, about where do we put our telefees for future improvements on the secondary system, so, we'll have to have that discussion, and then we'll bring some things to the board, probably starting first of the year, to get that started. Also, I guess since I was away, we actually finished all of the work out here in Saluda, so you have brand-new pavement, new striping, new everything. We will be doing paving through Urbana next year, so that's another part of the county that will get new asphalt and other places, but that will be a major project that we'll have to work with the citizens on, and the business owners there, so I wanted to give a heads-up for that. Also, two bridge projects that are in your package, Route seventeen, it's the southbound lane over Drag &amp; Run, there at the county line, there will be a superstructure replacement there of that bridge, which means that it will be down to one lane, southbound, after construction starts in 2020, and I'll bring more information once the contractor's on board. But that will go to add on October the eighth, which is my birthday, so that should be a good luck for that one. Route six twenty-five over Barracks Pond, I do believe that is scheduled for a detour. If we can do something different, we will definitely work that way, but that one's coming up in November for the actual work, so I wanted to bring that to the citizens' attention, too. The six ninety Cook Point Road speed review is still underway, so hopefully we'll have an answer on that pretty soon. Our completed projects for those pipe replacements on your sheet, as well as some repairs to some roads, I guess three roads for pipe replacements and drainage improvements, three for some repairs. We did get the trees out of the median, I saw some stuff back and forth with that while I was away, they have all been taken care of, I'm assuming, unless there's more, let me know. And then, on the other sheet, upcoming projects, we did have some more work on six-ten and eleven-oh-one, I do believe that was also completed. We do have an October fifteenth start date for our contractors to pick up litter on the primary and cut the grass for one last time, in preparation for Oyster Festival, and hopefully our last cut of the year. And I don't have any other updates, November twelfth is the Fall Transportation Meeting, that happens yearly for folks to voice their support for their projects in their area. We don't have any large projects, but if you have any applications, or things for local projects, or assistance projects, that would be the time to send a letter of support, or things like that, for that, so, there should be an email coming out to staff on that soon, I just wanted to mention that, so. And other than that, I don't have anything else, unless you have something for me.
Any questions or comments of Joyce? Nice to have you back.
Ms. Chairman, I did have one quick question. We had some public comment earlier tonight about what would need to take place, and I think I'm familiar, but for the folks in the audience, what would need to take place for VDOT to do a traffic study, or a study to see if the turn lanes and the improvements around the Cook's Corner intersection around the seven-eleven are sufficient?
Cook's Corner, or Locust Hill?
Excuse me, Locust Hill, thank you, Locust Hill. Would there need to be some kind of study commissioned to look at that?
The initiation of a project could start with a study, and we could look at that, if we looked to see if the turn lanes, the individual businesses that are there have always been there and operated in the same sort of capacity, so under our regulations, they're not required to make upgrades to today's standards. So, you know, if you have a business and it's successful, and it was built fifty years ago, and it's still there, VDOT's not gonna make the person who's coming into the business change those turn lanes, or entrances, and things like that. So, to look at it from a perspective of what would it need to be better, or improved, or redone to today's standards, we could probably give some ideas, but then it would be upon the county to decide if they wanted to go forward, if it would score in the Smart Scale program.
Right, that's what I was referring to.
That's the only place where you would have funding, you'd have to compete with the other projects, it'd have to have...
It'd have to score pretty high, and have a pretty valid study backing it up, so those money's could be used in the primary...
The study would have to show if there was a true safety issue, based on the metrics we use, if it improves economic development, and does those sort of things. So, we can, we can look into it, if the board would like us to do, but it wouldn't be a formal study, it'd be more of a look to see if they would want, you would want us to look at it from a Smart Scale application.
I think before we do that, I would like, and I'm not blind, I hope I'm not blindsiding you with this, but can you look at the accident data to see if it's justified for something we may want to consider?
Yeah, I made a note to look at it, and see...
It is a fair, it's growing in congestion, to some degree, and it's something we may wanna look into, as a possible funded project through the Smart Scale. And I know the first step for that is to try to get some study, and see if any improvements are warranted or justified. And I think the accident data would tell us a little bit.
Yep, and we will be reaching out to staff about having our get-together, we do every other application cycle. Smart Scale applications are taken every other year, and so next year, we'll be going into application year, we wanna start now with getting these projects. So, you get four projects, and then one, I guess, through the PDC, if you're interested. So, we do have some room to look at some other intersections and areas, too, so...
Joyce, one question from a previous life. If one of those businesses were to need to get a building permit, wouldn't that trigger? I had an experience in Dinwiddie County where a building permit triggered VDOT to come in and tell us they wanted to do things differently about our driveways, and so...
Yeah, the regulations, the regulations determine whether or not we can ask for those improvements.
Okay.
And it depends on the change of use, and some other, the regulations clearly say where we have the authority to ask, and where we don't.
I wanted to be clear, 'cause I, that never set real well with me.
No, 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 we sort of follow them, there's three of them, but I can't quote them to you, 'cause I'm not a lawyer.
That's kinda part of the discussion, 'cause VDOT gets a little bit of grief sometimes on their turning radiuses, and their turning lane requirements and whatnot, and they have those standards in place, because even if a business comes in that's small, all businesses want to grow, and they take into consideration trip generation data for that. So, sometimes you have scenarios where a small business comes in, and they just wanna operate like a fruit stand, or something, and they're like, oh my gosh, I gotta do all this for an entrance. But if they're successful, they're gonna grow and generate the trips that would justify that according to VDOT standards. The opposite's true, maybe businesses start off small, but they grow, and then it becomes an issue where maybe some state funding would be necessary to make some infrastructure up there.
And I do think that you did a bit of a traffic study earlier this year, engineer, when you came on, the new engineer, and I'm sorry, Scott, went out there, but I think what some of the citizens are seeing is that that, seven-eleven is easily accessible by trucks and tractor trailers, because of, there's a lot of concrete pad, so it's getting more traffic. And also with the closing of Stormont Road, Healy's Road is getting more traffic. So, I think the circumstances have changed a little bit.
Evolved.
Yes, and that, so, just if you keep it up on that.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I'll put that on your list.
Thank you. Joyce, thank you, and nice to have you back.
It's great to be back.
Do we get to keep you for a while now?
A little bit, unless they send me on another special assignment, which I'm not going.
Very good, thank you.
I'll get you to pass a resolution to get me to stay.
Alright, moving along, I've been trying to look around the podium and see if we had anybody from the schools. We've got one budget transfer request, which either Matt or Betty, if y'all would like to describe that, since I don't see anybody from the schools, to request it.
I don't, I don't know anything about it, other than the schools are requesting a transfer to reallocate funds within their current year budget. Looks like they're moving, moving benefit monies from different benefit lines into a vocational tuition payment.
Gotcha.
I have no problem with that.
Well, to my knowledge, since I've been on the board, we've never turned down one of their requests, we just use that as a way for us to keep our finger on the pulse of how the finances of the school are working. So, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion for approval of that request.
I'll make a motion FY twenty-twenty, there's a three budget transfer form.
Motion duly seconded, hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same side, hearing none, so ordered. Alright, on pages fifty-eight through sixty, you've got Social Services, a report only, if there's no questions or comments on that. Like to welcome our representatives from the Department of Aviation, Mark Cliff, welcome. Come on up and illuminate us.
Well, it's a bright day, so my job should be easy.
Did you fly in the Hummer?
No, we drove up there, and looked around. So, I, Ms. Chairman, members of board, Matt, Betty, Mark Flynn, Director of the Department of Aviation, you have the report, that white paper, and Cliff Burnett is gonna present that to you all. Between Cliff and me, we have forty-four years of experience with the department, and I've been there for going on eighteen months. So, Cliff was around...
He was just a baby.
He was, he's death, yes, there were no child labor laws and those things. And the Small World Department, part of the report gets into the implementation study back in nineteen ninety-eight about a regional airport. Well, I was acting as county attorney for King and Queen in those days, and would come up here to Saluda. Dan Cavano was trying to keep everybody corralled, and he was pretty good at it.
That dates you right there.
That dates me, yes, yes, I've been around, that was in the middle of the last century. So, Cliff will present the swipe paper to you, and just talk, walk you through the issues. It is, of course, about a role change, that is, local service versus the general aviation community service. And implied in that, and addressed in this, is currently, it's a fairly, it's a very short runway, twenty-one hundred and sixty feet, I think, and, which runs you out over those folks' houses, and the change would be to angle the runway, and probably get maybe thirty-four hundred feet out of it. But that comes in with the, with the role change. By the way, I am a pilot, I actually flew, you know, a couple of years ago, you had a Mooney, the guy was in a stroke of brilliance, decided to take off with three or four people on board midfield, which is, you know, you can go out driving on black ice, and it'll work just about as well as he did. So, anyway, I came in in a Mooney, and, you know, had no problems coming in, and went out, obviously no problems, but as you know, the airport currently, the runway is really limited for the aircraft that can come in. Now, Mr. Barber flies a good-sized Twin, and he's a very good pilot, and knows the environment. You get somebody traveling through from, and this happens a lot, pilots come through from New Jersey going to Georgia, they need to stop and buy gas, and on our apps, we know where the cheap gas is. And, you know, that would mean a pilot would wanna stop in here, your gas is inexpensive. But if I'm, if I was a pilot coming from whatever, Pennsylvania, and I saw twenty-one hundred feet, most airplanes, I would say, not going there, not gonna happen. So, that's, that's just a, from a pilot's perspective, not the Department of Aviation, pilot's perspective, that's, that's a reality. So, now, if the airport runway was realigned and extended, that isn't gonna have the same impact, and Cliff will talk about this quite a bit, the economic impact of, you know, the airports is the economic front door to a community. If you're a corporate, if I was running a corporation, and I had a flight department, and had a, well, a King Air three-fifty, like the department flies, at thirty-four hundred feet, we're not gonna consider coming there. That company wouldn't be looking at that airport, okay? That's, that is a reality. But thirty-four hundred feet is very different in this pilot's mind from twenty-one hundred feet. I will, I'll talk very briefly about, I know one of the issues is creating an airport authority, which is an independent political subdivision, it's done by special legislation, by the General Assembly authorizing it. It usually will say what localities can be members, and then you have an agreement to, among the localities that would participate, or it could be Middlesex County alone, can still be an authority with just one member. And there, and I've done that as an airport attorney, I've been an airport attorney since eighty-six, I've taken, I've helped a couple of airports with that process, and I think it has worked well for them. I will say, as you all know, on borrowing money, if it's general obligation funds, you have to have a referendum, and that is a very time-consuming, energy-consuming, and expensive process. And an airport authority generally would borrow money to, say, build hangars, or a corporate hangar, it can do it on a revenue bond, and there's no, you don't have to go to, it does not, the Constitution is not invoked, does not require a referendum at that point, that's, that's one of the things. It also makes it easier, you know, if, say you were putting an instrument approach in, and you had to have a piece of land to make that work, and the person that owned the piece of land didn't wanna do it, if you all are the sponsor today, as you are today, you'd have to condemn that land, if that's, if you chose to do that. And it's a different proposition for an airport authority to condemn land, if it has to, that's rare, of course, but that, that is a difference between an airport authority, I guess it's really political insulation, they can just make the decisions for the airport, and go from there. So, so, anyway, the role change, going from local service to general aviation community, that is an independent process from creating an authority. Now, they can go hand-in-hand, for sure, but they are two separate issues, and Cliff will address the, the role change one. From the department's perspective, we very much want to support all of our airports, including Hummer Field, I mean, it's a cool place, this is, you all have a great place, you know, tides in across the river, you have all the stuff that you have in Middlesex County, as you know, from reports, you see that a really majority of the aircraft are not Middlesex County residents that are based there, but, so it's a great community to be in. Our, our role is to support your development of the airport, we like to see airports grow. And, and in a perfect world, if money was free, going to thirty, realigning and going to thirty-four hundred feet would be a really great move. You know, the, and I'm, this is in the purely hypothetical department, so please, anybody writing newspapers, you know, you could move Route three down some, and then extend that way. Again, that's purely hypothetical. But whichever direction the county chooses to go, the department will, we will do what we can to support you, support an authority, however you want to move forward. So, with that sort of overview, I'll ask Cliff to come up and walk you through fairly briefly the white paper, unless you have any questions for me.
Anyone? Thank you, Mark, you must have been very thorough.
Hey, good afternoon, Ms. Chairman, members of the board, pleasure to be back, Walker, Betty, pleasure to be back in the county, I've been coming here, working on airport projects since nineteen seventy-eight, and it's just a pleasure to be back and talk to you about Hummer Field. So, as Mark said, you know, our goal is to try to make airports, is, use the R and B phrase, be all they can be, and that's what we want Hummer Field to be, all you can be, we want it to make sure it meets your expectations, not necessarily Commonwealth's expectations, but we gotta find a good compromise, and make sure it's a successful airport. So, you guys came back to us a few months ago, and asked us to do a study, to consider changing the role, and as also a part of that study, you asked us, you looked at some of the feasibility, some of the options you could have to lengthen the runway, do some other facility improvements there. Parish and partners... Parish and Partners did a very nice job responding to the RFP, answering the questions in the RFP and addressing the issues that were included in, in the RFP. And they delivered that, that product, which we have thoroughly gone through and had conversations with them and the staff here. In, so, so Mark asked me to prepare, to take all the information, kind of condense it, synthesize it, and determine how, what we really had here. What was best, really goal, what was best for Middlesex County, what was best for the Commonwealth? And come to some compromise or come, come to some conclusion. And let me back up. I'm, I'm assuming that all the members have got a copy of the report? Okay. So that'll help me shorten this up a little bit. So in the white paper, we considered the history, and, and as you, as the paper talks about since nineteen seventy-two, I think we've, we've done six different studies, looking how to address or grow or handle Hummel Field. And again, we looked at the current conditions of the airport, runway length, the width. Now, we didn't do an in-depth engineering analysis, but we pretty know, we know Hummel, Hummel Field pretty well. So that, that's how we started off, looking at the history, looking at the field, reviewing the work that Parish and Partners did for the county. We took all this information and we analyzed it. We thought the best way to analyze it, we had, you know, two options. Retain, remain a local service airport, or go to a general community airport. And we'll just call that a GC. So what we did, we did a SWOT analysis on both of them. And, and in the process of doing that, we tested each one of them against these, these four criteria. Make Hummel Field as safe and practical for the flying public, reorient it and lengthen the runway to improve safety and reduce noise impacts, grow economic activity at the airport, and increase funding resources for the airport. So we went through those four, tested each, each role against, against those, those four items to see how they, they came out. And at the end of the day, it, it was, it was very clear that they had a lot of similarities. Contrasting, not that great, not that much of a difference, but I'll talk to that in a second. And then we looked at, we also analyzed, like I said before, the Parish and Partners study. So that's how we went about analyzing and looking, again, at Hummel Field. What it came down to, we, what it really came down to was two choices. Does the county go to local service, or does it go to the GC? And if you don't mind, let me read, read it for the, for the audience, because they haven't had a chance to, to see it. So considering, consideration of the history, current conditions, facts delivered from the different analyses, do not present decision makers an obvious choice. That's what really came out of that SWOT analysis, that obvious. Rather presents a conundrum for the Middlesex County and the department to solve between the two following options. First, retain a local service role. That's what the airport is, is categorized today, just like highways categorized, roadways, interstate, or rural routes, we categorize airports. Retain rural, local service role. If Hummel Field retains the local, local service role, the airport would continue to eligible, be eligible for discretionary, for discretionary funded safety and preservation projects. In addition, it would be eligible for DOAV's Rural Airport Runway Rehabilitation Program, which is a new program we just started, that overlays runways at a ratio of ninety-five percent state, five percent local. This option does not fulfill all the desired goals of the role change, but it has potential to reduce a degree of risk, provide the additional funding resources and higher return on the county's investment in the airport. Now, like I, let me make this, it really does, let me make a point here. You're eligible today for safety and preservation projects, not capital development, i.e. a run, new runway. Okay? That would be considered a capital expense. So we'll help you preserve the runway, we'll help you make it safe, retain, but we will not allocate any discretionary money or capital. So if we change the role, the general aviation community, changing the airport role to GC on the surface may appear to be a clear choice between the two options, but Middlesex County will have to consider the following conditions, and some of these are potential. The airport would be excluded from the rural runway program, the ninety-five percent funding. Capital discretionary funding is not guaranteed for a new Hummel Field runway or any cap, any capital development. You have to compete against all the other airports in Virginia, general aviation airports. And by the way, that funding is eighty percent state, twenty percent local. Since the inception of the Commonwealth Airport Fund, back in nineteen eighty, eighty-five era, Virginia Aviation Board has not funded any new runways, eighty percent, twenty percent local. Now, we've spent a lot of money on larger projects elsewhere in the state, runway extensions, and put eighty-twenty money against it, but we haven't built any new runways. But that's got to be put out there, because we want you to, to know all the facts. Funding environmental requirements, legal and construction challenges were not, excuse me, if funded, if funding envirom, funding environmental requirements, legal and construction challenges were nonexistent, it may take six to seven years to construct a new general aviation runway and possibly require the airport to close for, for a period of time, maybe one to two years. A new thirty-four-foot runway will provide limited capability for corporate-class aircraft. Now, what am I talking about? Mark referenced it. We have two King Air three fifties, we use them for economic development purposes, economic development partnership flies in. People that are interested, looking at your sites cannot land, would not be able to land at Hummel Field. They can land up at Middle Peninsula and West Point, which is eighteen minutes from here, approximately, given traffic. How much time traffic, twenty-five minutes? Most B-two class aircraft, like I said, will continue to go there. They do now. And one of the studies, if you recall, back in the day, we, we did a study, and all the counties participated in selecting a site, Gloucester, Hummel Field, West Point, of where we should build a regional airport, and after conclusion of that study, it was to be up at West Point. So we kind of drilled this down for you. We want you to know what this role change actually means to you as the county, with regards to investment and future cost. Bottom line is, the airport remaining a local service airport is a more predictable opportunity for the county, because you, you know what you got, you know what you get, what you can be eligible. If you do switch, change it to a GC, it's kind of a high-risk choice for you, because you don't know. Now, you'd still be eligible for preservation and local projects, which you compete for today. And they do carry a higher rating plus in our priority system. So to conclude, we wanted to make sure, in this white paper, that we tried to lay out to you, your, your choices, to know what your choices could mean to you in the future. And we understand it's, it's a, it's a hard choice, because, but we, the real question is, what are the county's expectations, and what do you want, that, how do you want that airport to serve the community? If you kind of like the status quo, you may want to stay local service. If you desire, go to thirty-four hundred feet on the runway, if we, if we could get that out of there. We're not sure we can do that, because we're going to have to do just, we're going to have to do a master plan, we'd have to do an environmental assessment. We don't know what's out there from environmental assessment with regard to the Corps, what they would say. Then we'd have to do a design, then we'd have to do construction. So it's, it's, it's a long, it's not a quick answer process. Don't know if we have to mitigate anything out there, that could be additional cost, any cost, and we've just, you know, if there was something on the wall, it could be anywhere from four to five million dollars total cost. That's, that's really what I have, be glad to answer any questions.
Yes. Cliff?
Go ahead, please. If funding environmental requirements, legal and/or construction were nonexistent, it may take six or seven years to construct a new general aviation runway and possibly require the airport to close for an extended period of time during construction, one to two years. That almost alone says we don't want to go forward with it, I would think.
I don't, you know, we just wanted to make you aware of the facts. I don't know what, how this, what's important to this board. I just, we just wanted to make sure you knew the facts and potential hurdles you could, you could face. Again, we've seen projects across the state where they get into some environmental issues. It could take two, two, three years to get an environmental assessment through. Just, we just want to lay the facts on the table, and for you to process that, I don't want to stand, I'm not going to stand here and say, no, you don't want to do that. In fact, this is a campus decision. Mark? And, yeah, and during the environmental process, until you actually start construction, the current runway would still be in use. And, and, and it, and that happens from time to time. I mean, airports close for a while. The worst case is Grundy, they're mining the coal out from under the airport there, it's going to be closed for five years. But, but it's, for pilots, they surely do not like it, but when they think they're going to get another thirteen hundred feet or something like that, you know, that's just part of being a pilot. Sometimes the airport closes. So it's, it's not a fatal thing, and again, if it's five years, if two years of that is, is environmental, and then another year, couple of years, another year and a half is planning, that whole time, your current runway would still be in operation. Yeah, I'm sorry if I misled you to that, but...
Well, if the current runway is still in operation, why are you talking about closing it for possibly six or seven years?
It's, it's, no, not six, seven. No, it would, it could take five to seven years to do the whole new runway, runway, but in that process, during the construction phase, depending on, you know, what's the soil out there, you know, we don't know yet. It could take, you may have to close the runway for a period of time, maybe a year, year and a half, this, we just don't know, but you need to understand you could face that.
Well, my, my question is, is different from this, but I, I think in, in, in Mr. Mansfield's question, key words are if, may, and possibly. And, and what you said, this is just to let us know that in your experience, in the worst-case scenarios, these possibilities are, are out there, and I appreciate that. My question is, if we, if we go GC and nothing else happens, we don't form an authority, we don't worry about aligning and lengthening, there's no downside to that, is there? Okay, I just wanted to make it clear with that.
The, the one downside...
Is runway resurfacing.
Is the runway rehab.
Resurfacing.
Yeah.
But you get eighty-twenty on maintenance otherwise, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Now, you're eligible to request from us funding to overlay that runway, but it'd be eighty-twenty, that's ninety-five, five.
And it's competitive with other...
And it's competitive.
Right. And so we're, we're basically, if we went GC and didn't do anything else, that program would be lost on us, and we'd lose fifteen percent of runway resurfacing.
Right.
But without going GC and without becoming an authority, we're failing to check some boxes that get us along the way to getting the funding for the capital improvements. Is that accurate?
That, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then one, there's also, if you were to go GC with the current runway, I think there is some opportunity to extend that current runway, some, not much, but some.
I think that opportunity would be very limited, given the property owner's desire to, to do the other things.
No question.
I don't think that lengthening the runway as it, as it is aligned now is a possibility.
Right. But if, I mean, even if you wanted to extend it to a hundred and fifty feet, that would be eighty-twenty. That, that's the only point there. Again, so you know the, so you know the terrain on the rural runway program, you, you are competing against maybe six other airports. GC, you're competing against possibly twenty-five to thirty-five. Not, you know, doesn't mean you won't compete, because, you know, our goal was to fund the best project. Eric, you know, where's the best, the need, and that's what our priority system has done over thirty-five years, and we think it's been very successful in putting the money at the right place to fund the right project. So I'm not saying we could never get to it. I just, again, we want to make sure you understand that, that it's a challenge.
Right.
You know, but you compete for VDI funds.
Well, safety checks are right big box, and, and we've talked about the Mooney that took off half-field, but we've had some folks take off full-field and have any number of other complications with the takeoff or landing, and that shorter field doesn't give you any room for having anything else go wrong.
Exactly.
Runway behind you, altitude above you, and fuel on the truck, that's all the useless things.
And I will, I'll just, I'll reiterate really, that for an air, for a pilot who knows the fields, based there, eh, you know, knows how to do it. It's the one passing through that's going to see that twenty, right now, twenty, they're going to see this air chart and see two thousand, or it's twenty-one hundred feet, and they're going to say, not going there. I'm not going to that restaurant, I'm not buying that fuel, I'm not going to stay in one of the motels around, you know.
Well, what, what if we say, we've got a twenty-one hundred feet, we sure would like to go to thirty-four hundred. Hey, can you give us the funding?
Yes, I, yes, yes, you would be eligible for the funding, we'd have to change your role to GC, and you would be eligible to compete for that money, to extend that runway.
And what would it cost us to go there?
Again, we think somewhere around five million dollars total cost, total cost. That's everything soup to nuts, that's from planning, environmental, everything to construction.
Five million to just, to determine whether, five million to determine...
That's the total nut, five million does it. All the studying, all the asphalt, ready to put the stripes on it and take off. Five million's the total, studies, environmental, the whole deal, and the construction.
But what if we, I can't, I can't see how we could spend five million dollars and end up with no extension.
Well, Mr. Chairman, and answer, so the five million, and that's around, that's a rough estimate. The five million would be the total cost of realigning and extending the runway. The counties, and if that happened, the county's share would be a million dollars, twenty percent. And, and then, and that means you would have a thirty-four-hundred-foot-long runway, doesn't go out over those folks' houses, and is, and is available for more pilots to come in.
What, what amount of money would we need to dedicate to find out whether we got the...
You'd do grants.
Got the five million.
If, okay, so if, if we change the role, if, if, if you guys consider what we've said today, and what's in the report, and ask other questions, and have gone, gone through your process, we would change the role, Mark would, Director would make the decision to change the role, you're now eligible to compete for the money, there's a process of submitting forms, et cetera, et cetera. The first project out, out, out the gate, we would have to do a master plan and study to determine how, if it was, how we could reorient the runway, have it fitted in there, what the most we could get, considering all the setbacks, all the building require, you know, et cetera, et cetera. That'd be step one. That could be, I'm going to turn to the expert. I'll get him off the hook, that could be a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yep.
If it was solely a runway justification study, which is harder to get justified from... If it was solely a runway justification study, which is harder to get justified from state level to get them to pay for that, so we'll evaluate more aspects of the airport. If it's just that, it could be set fifty or so, but he's right, it's a hundred.
Yeah, because when we do this, we're just not gonna build a runway. We have to look at taxiway, we have to look at aprons, we have to think about where this, where are you gonna be in twenty years? Do you need room for other key hangers, so forth? This is just not a...
A revised layout plan.
Yes. Yeah, then we need to be a little bit more, drill down a little bit harder. So I throw that figure out. Again, I'm not a consultant, but I'm just telling you what my experience of cost, the order of magnitude of the cost. That would be the first study. And then, once you reviewed that and looked at it, you would vote to whether or not to move forward. It's not an obligation, you would vote to move forward. We would hope you would after we've invested the money, but we've had others.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions, too. About the rural airport runway rehabilitation program, and you say there's a pool of about six airports right now that you compete for. Just to clarify for that, any extension or realignment would not be eligible for that fund, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And of those six airports, do you know how many might have authorities running them?
Couple of them are actually privately owned, public use. Some of them are municipally owned, county owned. We're talking Chase, Chase City, Crew, Gordonsville.
Okay.
Lack of birth, Brunswick. Communities, you're some of the sites.
Okay. And then, in the larger pool, the airports that have the general aviation, local, yeah, the G C, and would be eligible for the eighty-twenty program and eligible for realignment and lengthening funding, if your project got approved, so you're one out of twenty-five eligible. Not all those are ready to make the changes, but if we're trying to plan not for, you know, next summer, but we're looking at the future. So participating in that program, do you know of that group? Are all of those run by authorities, or half of them, or...
Gosh, I, you know, I would say a third of them are commissions and authority. Probably, I live in more than a third, are municipally owned, county owned. Some of them are privately owned, publicly owned airports.
Okay. So the state is dealing with, in the general aviation, with authorities, municipalities, privately owned?
Give you example, ma'am. In Annapolis Airport, I'm by the city, the largest airport, there's two parallel runways. Okay? And then you got Orange County, you know, single runway. They just vary in size, sophistication.
Now, the way it's set up now, is the authority a factor in your application criteria?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So you're just looking though, you must have some criteria, though, that it's actually being managed, that people are paying their bills and things not...
I mean, we do look at the financial ability to carry through the project, right?
Yes.
So...
But whether it's an authority or a municipality, or that's not, okay, essential.
The, from my own perspective, and this is me as an attorney, haven't been an airport attorney since eighty-six, love county attorneys. And so, anyway, creating an authority is a healthy way to go, to move forward, because then you have a group, generally you'll have a mix of pilots and business people. You want pilots from the flying perspective, you want business people from, it's a business. And it can be a pretty healthy thing in the long run.
Can you tell us just overview on the economic health of aviation, general aviation or local, you know, small plane in Virginia? Is it growing rapidly, slowly declining?
You know, it is, it is growing. I think there are about forty-five hundred aircraft based in Virginia now. Of course, a lot of them are, a number of them are the big aircraft, but a lot of small airplanes. The number of pilots has dropped off over the last two decades nationwide. It's not a Virginia thing, but it is coming back. Right now is a really good time for a young person to take flying lessons and go to become a professional pilot. You can get out of, you can get out of, what, a couple of years of post-high school and start making sixty thousand dollars a year pretty easily. So there is an actual business model now. It used to be, if you were a pilot, it was a good way to just go broke. You know, how do you... Right? We gotta call the... So, you know, but now you can actually make money with it, which means in very, at the right places, flight schools are doing well, aviation mechanic schools are doing well. So there really are opportunities nowadays. It's, that whole world has changed for the good.
I can add some support to what Mark just said. I just flew American Airlines to the conference in Austin, and I swear the copilot looked like he was twelve years old. That's American Airlines.
Gentlemen, one other question. You know, the Virginia Department of Aviation does not care where our twenty percent comes from on any of these projects, i.e. if we get grants from foundations or whatever else, you don't need to, you don't care. Okay, just wanted to be clear that we had those other sources, their money's potentially available to us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ms. Weinhardt asked some questions. We're drilling down on the rehabilitation program. In all fairness, so if we were to do a full reclamation of the existing runway and bring you up to fifty feet, you're not, you really don't need to stay standards today. If we brought you up to fifty feet, replaced the lights, did a full reclamation, approximate cost would be about, total cost would be about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and your cost would be five, five percent of that.
Twenty-five thousand.
If we go out there and do borings and determine that the soil's pretty good, and we only get by with putting a couple inches of state mixed asphalt, we're down to maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then your share's five percent of that. So you need to know, we want you to weigh all your options, know which way to go. So when you make this, so when you come back to us and say, okay, we heard you state, this is what, this is what the county wants to do.
Okay.
Because if you go G C, it's not gonna affect West Point. You know, I'm sure some people will maybe asking us, well, you know, if we do that, what is the thirty-four? It won't compete against them. So that's like a no harm, no foul. We looked at that and considered that, too. I'm sorry. Bet you all.
So the rural rehabilitation program, though, if you did that, does that preclude then later doing a role change and sending, it would be an investment?
It would make it difficult, simply because if we, if we put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into it, and then next year you wanted to do away with it, we would not have, we would take a dim view of that, you know.
Is there anybody who's used that program to rehabilitate their runway, but then used other funding to extend it?
Yes. In fact, in Gordonsville, it was interesting, and by the way, the reason we developed the rural runway, rural airport runway rehab program was that there were some airports, your asphalt, I think, is fair condition, which ain't bad. But there were, Chase City, for example, I landed in the Mooney down there, and it was like landing on railroad tracks. Kabam, kabam, kabam. It was rough. And from the Commonwealth's perspective, we were concerned that some of those airports, you know, the town of Chase City couldn't afford twenty percent of a full-blown runway project. They could afford five percent of a, and we're using VDOT standards for the asphalt, which makes, brings price down. So, so anyway, there was, that's, that's gonna be one of the earlier airports that we're gonna do. But, so Chase City otherwise could very well end up losing its license to operate as an airport. It was at that point. And then, so then in Gordonsville, theirs was in bad shape, their runway's in bad shape, but it also, then they have no taxiways, so you have to turn around and back taxi the other direction, which is inherently risky, because somebody's coming in and landing the opposite direction. Well, in Gordonsville, there's a hump in the runway, so that when you're on one end, you can't see an airplane on the other. And that's not a good, so, so, in Gordonsville, they're paying the five percent of the overlay, but they're paying the twenty percent of getting rid of the hump.
Oh.
So, yeah, we're happy, we're happy to do blended kinds of projects.
And not all rural runway, airport's hard, local service. Some of them have higher density.
Oh, they do? Okay.
We just looked at rural, size of community.
And that's like, and so, just one more question. Under the rural rehabilitation, if you, could the alignment be changed a little bit? And then, but not like the...
That was the intent, was to take what was in place and make it safer and, you know, upgrade it and put some extra life into the runway.
Basically, so that runway would not cease to exist.
But we can't call alignment a safety thing under those definitions.
It kind of means, it would still be a capital project.
Got it, okay.
And by the way, you all saw in the report that you actually have a fair amount of activity. You have a lot more activity than a lot of other local service airports, and you're actually about up to the median for the G C airports. So you have the activity.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Gentlemen, thank you. It's very nice to see you again.
Yes, good to see you all.
Come back and visit with us often.
Yes, sir. And we'll wait to hear from you.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, next on the agenda, Mr. Dave Kreutz is gonna give us a stormwater update. And he also advises me, he has a couple of other things he might want to talk about in addition to that that are not on the...
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think one thing made it in, I didn't have the plans.
Okay.
Mr. Walker.
Do you want me to pull that up first?
Thank you, folks, for coming.
It's...
Okay, oh, the plans in this? Do you want me to pull it up?
I'm gonna get it.
All right.
I'm supposed to be careful of that.
Yeah, that airport thing, the button.
Yeah.
Please use the...
Yes, sir. He's not talking.
He's not talking.
I'm not talking.
There's three sentences.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to wait for Mr. Weinhardt?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll wait just a minute.
We'll give Kathy a minute.
I think that's the most people we've had in this room about the airport since we were talking about geese.
Do you want to make that a little bit longer, so you know? Please, thank you.
Okay. You know what I want to do? But then, what do I want to do? It's not what I want to do. It's the key. Do we want to go here? Okay, Dave, go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna, Mr. Chairman, I'm a member of the board, I'm gonna give us a brief update on stormwater management. Before, I'm just gonna give a brief history, and I'm gonna try to keep that as brief as possible. If everybody remembers back in two thousand fourteen, the state instituted this new stormwater law. And in that law, what they did is they basically took out some of the old criteria and they replaced it with much more onerous and stringent requirements. So originally, it was intended that the localities, such as us, would be administering this program. We would need staff or have to work in some type of coordination with other localities or peer review, where we would have to administer this program. So what happened as a result of that, there was a resolution adopted that was at sixty-some odd what, localities?
There was one county that complained first.
Yes.
And then sixty others glommed on behind that one county to get that law changed.
And that one county being, being this county.
Yes.
Being, basically spearheaded that effort.
By name, Middlesex County?
By name, this county was the leader of that initiative. So what happened is that when they, when they, this resolution came before everybody, they started looking at this ordinance, and they decided, well, you know, the low counties couldn't handle it because they didn't have the staff, they didn't have, and there was requirements for inspections of B M Ps in perpetuity. So what happened is they went and it got switched back. So what happened is they, it went back to D E Q. They said, D E Q, if you, you know, we're not opposed to your ordinance or your regulation, but if you like it so much, you do it. So what happened is D E Q ended up holding the, holding the bag, so to speak. Well, at the time, they didn't have the staff either to handle it. So what they did is kind of their last great act of defiance, they said, well, we're gonna do anything over an acre, and the localities will do anything under an acre. So what that did is it created what they called this donut hole, that we've been operating in for roughly five years. Whereas, basically, D E Q, for any projects over an acre, they will take and do the design review, and anything under an acre is, the localities are responsible for. Well, there hasn't been, the regulations haven't, obviously, they have an understanding that the staff wasn't prepared to do this. So what's happened is essentially, we've been operating under a kind of a little, like I said, donut hole, whereas we just accept the engineer's design standards. So what happened is that when they started looking at this through a little bit more of a tighter lens, it was spearheaded by this locality, this region mainly, that not only was the staff not, or this not doable for the, you know, the small staff, but they started looking at the economic impacts and other secondary impacts, and actually looking at the science involved, and is this right for this area? So when they put together the shareholders groups and the, they started going forward with this, they engaged the engineering community. And what they came up with is they found out that the requirement, until you get over a certain percentage in a drainage basin, there's no degradation of streams, there's no negative impacts for this. And what they decided, that number is around seven and a half percent. So when they, as this legislation went through, they had a hard time engaging the environmental community, the, you know, the environmental community was a little hesitant about this. So they, of course, they were a stakeholder in this as well. They got this together with the engineering community, and the engineering community showed the data that showed that this is, this is true to form. So on the coattails of that, they initiated legislation that basically, what you see before is that they, if you go over, if you're under a certain percentage on your impervious cover in drainage basin, you have no negative effect. So they put this legislation into effect, and what you see here is two portions, and they call this the tiered, the tiered methodology. And they have the second portion of this, which is, actually fixes the requirement for the, what we call the donut hole, and for the requirement for design standards. So what they did is they got, engaged VIMs, and VIMs came up with a baseline impervious surface for each one of the drainage basins. And, Mr. Walker, if you could go to the map, the second page, you can see that most of our drainage basins are quite, we have a long ways to go before we get to seven and a half percent. The only one that has any issue is the one up in Butlow, where it's five and some change, I believe. And the reason for that being the fact that we have mostly, probably Route seventeen probably...
I think it's entirely driven by a four-lane highway that runs through that little node.
That little node.
That's all the impervious cover that's really up there.
But the rest of the impervious, the rest of the drainage basins are, have a long way to go to get to seven and a half percent. So what's happening with this is D E Q is working with us, and we will provide, we will have to monitor our, well, let me back up one step. In order to do, what happens is the MS nineteen component of this, as long as we're not tripping these thresholds, we can design to a lesser standard, an easier standard to meet, so to speak. So, once it goes over the seven and a half percent, you have to go to the energy balance... So it, once it goes over the 7.5%, you have to go to the energy balance equation, what we're, what has become pretty standard for most urban areas and most, the way DEQ's been taking it. What this does is being able to stay under this threshold helps some of these little small mompa-type shops that might not, it's a simpler standard to meet. They wouldn't have to have the expense that, say, would come to be under the current code section. So in order for us to work with DEQ on this, what, there, we, we came to this realization, we're gonna have to track this impervious cover as we go along. And this can be done through our permitting process. Staff is quite, you know, we're quite competent to hold, handle this. I mean, we've talked about it in-house. What we'll do is we'll basically tabulate these square footages when permits come through, site plans and that type of thing. It's just entered into a database, a spreadsheet or, or access database where, and we can track that. And this would be reported annually to DEQ. Yes, sir?
Yes. This map that you're showing.
Mm-hmm.
There's only one number, 5.228. That's the only one that gets anywhere close to-
Yes, sir.
The 7.5%.
And as, as Mr. Walker and I were just speaking, that, that, we can attribute most of that to the fact that it's such a small drainage basin in the county. And it's, and it's probably consumed by Route 17. That's probably the biggest contributor to that particular impervious surface.
You're looking at Route 17 and that little parking area where the portion trucks park. That's pretty much what's in that little node.
And it's such a small drainage basin, so that would-
That little Butlow area is a drainage basin unto itself, just that little spot, whereas the other ones are this big.
It's how the water drains into the-
I understand.
And because it's within the county, our percentage is higher.
We have to deal with what's in our county.
I understand.
You know, the other county will have to deal with what's in their county.
It's just such a small drainage basin, I guess.
Once it gets into Essex County, it could be, you know-
Point eight-five.
Or it could be huge. I mean, it's just that this one drainage basin clips the county somewhat, so the rest of it could be thousands of-
Gotcha.
Square acres or whatever. So anyway, that's our only drainage basin and, you know, we, we've talked about these impervious surfaces. We're probably, in our lifetime, the people in this room probably are not gonna see these values tripped. This, you know, because you have to consider, these impervious surfaces have happened over a period of 200 years, I guess. You know, so you can see that our impact on, our development impact is very minimal on the degradation of streams and that type of thing. And they've looked at this and they have the engineering data to back it. It's just the only component, I just wanted to make the board aware of it, that we're working through this. We're trying to, we're getting closer and closer to get this in code and our, of course, this has to come over in our ordinance, it'll be code in our ordinance. And we do have some staffing requirements that are, in comparison to working or administering this stormwater program, are very minimal and doable, so to speak. So, you know, like I said, I've talked with staff, we've internalized with it, we've, none of us feel it's gonna be a problem keeping up with that.
And that was by design. That's some of the things we've pushed for.
Right, right. This is part of a, part of an agreement, so. If anybody has any questions on that, I just wanted to brief that we will be continuing to work on the code sections and we'll be setting up for it.
And, and just to give credit where credit's due, without Keith Hodges' leadership at the General Assembly, we wouldn't have got this by any stretch of imagination. Keith really worked very hard. He is the foremost stormwater expert, I think, on the General Assembly floor these days. Him and Tom Twelv-Twelder and Louis Lawrence.
And the PDC, yeah, we have to give some kudos to all those, all those people.
Dave, just the objective here, though, it does, from a citizen's point of view, someone in the business who wants to expand or someone who wants to put a new structure on their farm, this is gonna be, simplify the process for them as well as for our planning staff. Is that correct?
Simplifies the process and should reduce the cost of construction.
Okay, got it.
Because I believe you and Mr. Mansfield went to the Rural Coastal Summit and they showed some of the cost involved in building those facilities with that family dollar in Shackleford. And they're astronomical to build these, they're, they're almost comparable to the cost of the site itself, which is, you're talking about taking the cost of the site and doubling it almost to get these stormwater-
So we're removing a disincentive to businesses to invest in these, in our county.
Exactly, exactly. It makes, it makes it more attractive to, to, to come here and, and build a commercial facility, so. So does, the board members have any questions on any of that? We'll, staff will continue to work on that. It's been going on for five years, so we're, we'll continue with that.
Will the board need to entertain ordinance amendments?
I believe we've already done that. I think it's already been done.
Any future ordinance amendments needed, you know?
Pardon?
Any future ordinance amendments needed?
We will, I believe that this will probably be embedded in the ENS ordinance, I would imagine. So, and that's a, that, that we can deal with. So, any other questions on stormwater right now? I know that's an exciting subject, so. Everybody's probably ready to move on from that. A couple of other items I have, these will go pretty quickly. We've received a minor site plan application. This is on an existing site for the Cook's Corner Lift Station, Pump Station, for the sewer improvements they're going in. What I'm asking for is we have to get the board to authorize Mr. Walker to sign that, sign the application. Ms. Brown did the same thing with the EDA. They, their property's involved in the front, so.
Yeah, I rotated the drawing so you could get the north-south orientation of where this is. May be a little bit more beneficial to look at.
And if-
Easier to understand.
The Kidd Building is located right, right there, so the property conveyed to the EDA is just above that on the sheet, so. They had authorized, so we need authorization for, need the board to authorize Matt to sign the applications, any of the site plan applications as property owner on behalf of the board. And we're also asking for waiver fees for this particular project. We may have erosion settlement control and site plan applications. These should be nominal fees. The site plan is, for this, is $125. Erosion settlement control might be roughly $50 to $100 for a small site like this, so. We would, at this time, we'd like the board to authorize-
So roughly $225 or less is what you're asking to be waived?
Yeah, it's, it's a small amount. We haven't calculated the erosion settlement control, but there will be, I would estimate, no more than $150 for that. And $125 for this, and the authorization for Mr. Walker to sign.
Any fees Hampton Road Sanitation District pays for this project, they're just gonna ask us to reimburse them for it because they're our responsibility in terms of collection system. So we're in a sense paying ourselves.
Do we have a motion with regards to fees, probably in the $225 to $250 range to be forgiven?
Glad to make that motion.
One glad to make motion? Are you, are you glad to second it?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion duly made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of waiving the fees, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered.
And, and Mr. Walker's authorization to sign.
And Mr. Walker's authorization.
We need a separate.
Do we need to do that separately? Are we?
You can go ahead, since you only made the motion originally for the fees. Did the motion include authorization?
I did not say that, so. We now need a motion to authorize Mr. Walker to sign. So moved.
Second.
And second. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the last item of business I have here is the Whiting Creek Boat Ramp. If you remember, that was a project we were trying to get up and running that it ended up getting a little out of hand as far as cost. Mainly, I'm not putting, throwing VDOT under the bus, but when we started, we thought this was gonna be simpler. And what happened is there's a pipe that crosses directly, right in the area, that's exactly where it's at. And what it does is it-
How is it that we know exactly where that is? Don't we think we've been down there enough?
Yeah, I know. It's actually to the bottom of the page a little bit, but that's close enough for representation. So anyway, there's a, there's a drainage pipe that crosses. And when we started talking with VDOT, we found out that we have to, we have to pick up the drainage coming down the eastern side of Whiting's Creek Road. And then we also have, have to pick up the drainage across the street. So we ended up with some costly drainage items. We have to build a manhole one, like a junction box, we have a pipe coming in. We'll have, and all has to be handmade, you know, nothing's, you know, canned off the rack, so to speak, and everything, the outfall would have to go through the pipe. So the cost, and I started talking with some contractors, the cost went up enough to get it into the capital improvements threshold. So I've got a meeting with VDOT Thursday morning. And I'm gonna see if I can talk, there's a different, different engineer, different folks involved. Maybe we can look at this through a different, a different set of eyeglasses, so to speak, and come up with some, maybe some cheaper solutions. And then maybe get some prices. So I'm gonna talk to VDOT and see if, if we can do some other options rather than this complicated, expensive piping. Because, because when you put reinforced concrete piping, it gets to be expensive. So I'm gonna look at that, and we may be able to drop this back under the threshold and see if we can track it. I'm doing this now because, of course, our budget talks will come up pretty soon, capital improvements requests will go out very shortly. So I wanna get all this stuff together before, you know, before the budget, before you guys look at the budget. So any questions on anything?
It's just on FYI.
And all this is to make possible the, some parking down there so more people, more than two people can use that ramp?
Exactly. It's, it's a parking improve, it's for the park, improvement parking. We want to be able to provide a few spaces, parking, to alleviate some of the parking issues down there. It's been identified as an issue. If we could get, you know, if you could get three, four, two, three trailers in there, it would help, so, anything you can do. And also, I think the, we've looked at some things. We noticed that the watermen tend to pull their boats up on the, up on the beach sometime. The watermen may be able to pull up to the ramp, it may be easier to offload, or, or up to the bulkhead, rather. So it may be an easier offload for them if they could tie up to the bulkhead and load right there at the parking lot. They could, you know, would have a kind of a commercial benefit too, to the, you know, we always want to support our watermen. So that, that's one thing that was, you know, looked at too when we started going forward with the project, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, David.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you.
All right, moving on to regular agenda items. Betty, we got you on the next two, the budget supplement request on page 76 and VACO voting credentials. So I'll turn the floor over to you.
Okay. We have received our allocation of aid to localities, funding from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs in the amount of $38,181 that I would like to have appropriated back into the budget for the checks to those three fire departments. The, I'm sure you remember the, the Middlesex Volunteer Fire Department, it's their allocation, it goes through the TAM.
Right.
Same source, but it goes through the TAM. Okay. A move that we approve, budget supplement request, FY 2020-15.
We have a motion seconded. Duly seconded. Hearing no discussion. All those-
There is a little bit.
Let's hear some discussion.
A year ago, I, I asked for $4,000 for the Urbana Fire Department for a hydro-turbo draft pump. And I was promised at that time that I would get that 4,000, and I'm wondering if I can't get, if we couldn't at least add that 4,500 in this-
Did your fellow board members make that promise?
Yes.
Who promised that? Because I don't recall it.
I definitely recall that.
Kathy Wayne and I do not recall it. Do you recall?
Well, I do know the discussion that Keith's referring to. I, I just, I think the, within the budget, I think we handled a, a fair allocation of money to the three fire departments. And I, I, I'm much more comfortable sticking with this allocation and not getting into the details of who has which exact piece of equipment. But I, I, you know, that's not to say that I'm not open to solutions for unique circumstances. I just, I just think that's a problem that's been solved. I, I don't think the fire departments or the emergency services department, Mr. Lighten, are asking, so. I'm, I'm not interested in-
I can speak for the fire department. I'm on their fire department, and we purchase our own, and, and we're not asking for anybody to reimburse us for anything. And, and I can tell you that, you can talk to the chief himself, Ray Birch.
Yeah.
Nobody's asking for the $4,000. They want to purchase their own.
My, my problem is that I told him that, that if they went ahead and took it over their own budget, that we would reimburse him the following year based on what I had been told. Now, obviously, I wasn't promised that or anything like that, but I did make the statement to Ray. But, you know, there have been worse things happen than the loss of 4,500. But I would prefer not to promise somebody something and then not fulfill that.
Well, I'm sorry if I missed something, but I don't remember being part of a conversation that said we would pay that. I know there's been a lot of debate about it. So do we have a motion to, to, to go with this budget supplemental request as presented?
We had a motion and-
We had a motion seconded, then we had discussion, so. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no?
No.
One, two, three, two, one, the motion carries.
I, I've talked about it lots.
All right, VACO voting credentials. Betty?
Every year, the Virginia Association of Counties sends this voting credentials form for the county to appoint a voting delegate for the annual meeting that they will have in November. Mr. Mansfield, Mr. Jesse and Mrs. Swine are, are going to be attending that meeting. So the board needs to appoint one of them as a delegate to vote.
What about Wayne?
Didn't I say Mr. Jesse?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, I think Wayne is who y'all voted in years past, because I think the vote takes place on Tuesday.
Yeah. Before we appoint, out of three, who, who has the largest burning desire? Mr. Jesse?
That's a leading question.
I have the desire for Mr. Jesse to be our delegate, voting delegate.
Mr. Jesse, if appointed, would you accept?
Yeah, I didn't ask you.
Okay. All right, so would you make that in the form of a motion?
It's a motion. I move that Mr. Jesse be designated the voting delegate for Middlesex County at the VACO annual meeting.
Very good. I'd like to second it.
Have a motion duly seconded. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. Mr. Walker, YMCA survey proposal.
I contacted our consultant engineer and surveyor of Bay Design, and according to the annual services contract that we have with them, got an estimate on the boundary line adjustment and subdivision work needed to be performed for the Wilton School property in order for us to divide off a tract of land and basically, I guess, consider donating it to the YMCA. Wanted to bring this to the board's attention. Spoke to Gordon Jones at length about the proposal and the price. I mean, y'all know me. He has assured me that if the courthouse work goes well, that number may be a little lower. But that's what it would cost to do a boundary survey and a subdivision plot of that tract of land. And just real quick, just to remind the board of discussions last month, and not to take away an opportunity for me to use Google Earth. The idea was to subdivide off the property along this- The idea was to subdivide off the property along this fashion, just to the east of the basketball courts. The county would retain ownership of this tract or portion. And of course, this is the portion with some of the drainage easement issues with VDOT that we've been working through over the, or working, towards working through over the last several years. And pretty much consolidate all of the Y operations onto the western portion of the property. But the main reason I wanted to come before the board is just to disclose that we're looking at worst-case scenario of twenty-eight hundred dollars to perform the subdivision and plating necessary.
And the concept of dividing this off and donating the land to the YMCA came about because of the soft cost of dealing with stormwater management and so on and so forth.
There are some.
If they're occupying the property, it seems fair that they would be the ones to, to carry the water on that, on that job.
Yeah. As a property owner, we have maintenance requirements and responsibilities for some of the stormwater improvements built there on if, if they should fail and whatnot.
Well, do we need to approve twenty-eight hundred dollars? Or is this just an informational?
This is more informational item only. But if you want to approve it, that's fine too. I'm thinking we're authorized to expend it based on the discussions last month. I just wanted to disclose this is the worst-case scenario. Gordon did tell me if he got into the court courtroom and did the background research necessary for ownership and whatnot, the number could be lower.
We have a consensus to move forward with the survey?
That's all I'm here for.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. And then Matt, you're going to handle the proposed lease agreement with the Middlesex Foundation?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Bruce D. Simone to come up and give a little background, a little bit of history of what we've been doing up to this point and why, well, of course, it is needed. They need to lease the property in order to build the workforce housing. But before we get into that, just to address, can you kind of off the cuff, talk about the leasing preferences that are in place by the foundation? I know Middlesex County employees come first in leasing preference. And then there's like a tiered approach to where outside county employees, like employees of Lancaster County School.
That would be the third tier.
Third tier. Do you remember that off the top of your head? I just thought it may be beneficial for some of the public here.
Middlesex County employees, including, including school district sheriff's deputies would be the first tier or first leasing preference. The second leasing preference would be quasi-governmental organizations, state, regional, local, quasi-governmental organizations serving the citizens of Middlesex, say, including the Community Services Board or Bay Aging, the Regional Sanitation, or, not sanitation, but the Regional Jail Security Center. And then the third and last tier is employees of the immediately adjacent counties. And part of the reason why we, we went with that third tier, it turns out that I think there were five Middlesex teachers who were living in Mercer Place now. There had been, I think, two when we first started. And also, we saw it from a secondary market area to really strengthen the, looking at strengthening the financial feasibility of the project. So that's how we got to that third tier. And then, and then if, if someone on that waiting list is not one of those, those tiered or leasing preferences, then they would be eligible to apply.
Well, and I'll tell you, another part of the consideration when we formed the foundation was the aspect that if we have twenty-four families living here and some of them happen to work somewhere else, or they're coming here to live and they're bringing that paycheck home with them to spend locally in our restaurants and in our, in our businesses here in Middlesex. So the worry that maybe Essex County school teachers may live here was not a really worry for me. It was actually a benefit. Because they live here, they spend their money here, God willing, too. And we keep, we keep some of the money here, hopefully.
And we recapture some teachers that are going over across the river now.
Yeah, and of course, it is a good marketing feature too. When you, when you're trying to market for a new employee, and especially entry-level employee, when you say, oh, by the way, if you have trouble finding housing, we have this offer. And if there's spots available, you would qualify. Just wanted to add some clarity to that. And Bruce, anything else we would want to say on that?
No, I think that pretty much covers it. Just to talk a little bit about how we got here today. Given existing zoning density, we needed six acres for a twenty-four unit project. When we initially, oh, sure. When we, hello? When we first started looking at the project, twenty-four units under existing zoning required six acres of land. And we started talking with the county. And what Matt had indicated is it was the county's preference to look at a lease as opposed to a sale, for sale, or a fee simple sale. So we've been proceeding at a lease, looking at a lease. We came up with sixty years as the minimum term because that's actually the minimum term that the Virginia Housing Development Authority as a permanent lender would accept for a mortgage.
And they won't offer the low-interest loans on anything short of sixty years?
Well, they won't offer a loan period on a leasehold, ground lease. So, you know, normally, most of their deals are fee simple ownership. So we got the names of some attorneys from VHDA that have experience in closing VHDA and Department of Housing and Community Development loans. We solicited qualifications from those attorneys and procured one working in Richmond. And since that time, our attorney with Williams Mullen has been working with Heather in coming up with a lease that we believe will survive Virginia Housing Development Authority's legal review and find to be acceptable for them to make a permanent loan. Just to, we also have Department of Housing and Community Development financing in there. But the VHDA attorneys closed both loans, for their own loan as well as DHD's loan. So that's how it fits together. Let me stop there and let Matt continue.
Yeah, I, I'd just chime in and say, Bruce and I discussed the key aspects of the lease. It is, I think, as has been pointed out, it is, it's a similar lease to what we have with other organizations in the community, like the museum board, where it's, I'll call it a sweetheart lease. Because Middlesex Foundation is operating with a board primarily made up of people that was chosen to represent the school board, the county. I think the sheriff's department was offered space on the board, but opted not to take it. And then members in the community as well. So they're basically, while they're separate and an independent entity, they're leasing space for our benefit, to offer our workforce lower to moderate income housing. And I don't know, I mean, are we a hundred percent sure that school teachers wouldn't qualify?
Oh, no. We, and school teachers would in fact qualify.
They would?
There are five units out of the twenty-four that because of the financing would require, or would not be available for teachers or anyone.
They have to be low to moderate.
They have to be, yeah.
So, so I qualify to live there?
Ah, I don't know about that.
Can't ask for everything.
So, yeah, the other nineteen units are available there. The one million dollars of, of State Housing Trust Fund, we negotiated it so that, that would only require five units as opposed to all twenty-four units. So that was, we thought, a major breakthrough. The only other thing I would want to add is I think a comment was made, this gentleman, earlier in the, the public comment period about what appeared to be favorable terms, or at least financial terms, sixty, you know, sixty dollar a year lease. But I think part of the, that favorable term, financial term in the lease, also, I think, was really leverage, helped leverage the two-point-two-five million dollar award that the, that the Virginia, you know, the Vibrant Communities Award that we received a number of months ago. So it, it all kind of fit together. Matt, did you want to talk more about the lease?
I just, if the board had any other questions. There are a couple minor items in this lease that we had, we had to correct after it went to the board. A couple of them are really minor. They're referencing a paragraph that I think we struck earlier. Do you want to discuss that? All right, I think Heather wants to discuss that, but Kathy?
Just before you get to, I just wanted to clarify too, on this project. It is on county property, but it's county property that is currently vacant. And now, you know, providing revenue. And also, part of the project and being part of the Vibrant Communities, the intention here is that this incentivizes other projects in the community, in, in this area, by forming a hub and having some economic activity that would then benefit the county. I'm, I'm talking about the, the amount of the lease, the per year. It's, it's, at this point, it's a dollar more a year than we're getting out of this piece of property.
Well, and also, I think if we remember that the county, this board decided not to grant a real estate tax exemption. And so we would be paying real estate taxes on the improvement each and every year.
Correct. So that, thank you.
Heather?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there are two categories of changes. The first one, and these are really for the minutes, are typographical. There were some last-minute changes. And I apologize, what's in your packet does not have the page numbers like mine does. So bear with me, I'm having to kind of walk you through it. So on page eighty-five of your packet, section eleven B two, I'm going to go quickly. There's a reference to paragraph ten B, that should be eleven B. On page eighty-six at the top, there's a reference to section ten B, that should be eleven B. And then on page eighty-eight, at the bottom of paragraph thirteen, it says section eleven. It should say section twelve. So those are very minor, and I apologize for those. We changed paragraph numbers and missed those. The second change is a little more substantive in nature, and that is on page eighty-six. It is paragraph twelve A, it is the last sentence. It's, as the board's aware, the county is leasing this property to the Housing Foundation. We are not conveying it. And so I am recommending that this sentence be removed. I understand why the housing complex is asking for it. But this would allow the complex to actually have a physical interest in the county's property. And I'm recommending that you do not do that. I've spoken to opposing counsel, and she's advised me that they can still obtain funding from VHDA. VHDA likes to have this. But what this would mean is that if for some reason something went wrong, because the housing complex now has an interest in your real property, if there was ever a foreclosure, you now have property foreclosed on. So it's my recommendation to remove that sentence.
And I completely concur. We, we don't want to be under any possibility of losing county property.
Well, we've had some issues where sweetheart deals have, have not worked out to our eventual total benefit. And certainly, they should, and we should not, in my estimation. We shouldn't charge more than a dollar a year because this is what we're trying to, what we're trying to do would be undone by charging market rates for the real estate. By the same token, to take county assets and work them through a program as wonderful as this foundation is, and then have something unforeseen happen, and then the county lose ownership of the property? That, that, I, I don't want that to happen on my watch.
And our attorney in a conversation I had yesterday morning had mentioned, and I think her discussions with Ms. Lewis, had indicated that that might be a stumbling block from your standpoint. And what she told me is, I mean, obviously, Virginia Housing Development Authority likes to be in a superior leaning position. And, but that it's not, it's not something that's impossible to achieve. That it's something that I think they can then bring to their board of commissioners in order to resolve.
Get this position off, yeah.
Well, we don't want to do anything that stands in the way of this project. But inasmuch as we've got this investment in the land and we're willing to convey it to the foundation for sixty years for sixty dollars, I don't think we want to take a chance on a lose. And I don't, your project's not going to pay.
It's the only real concern I have is timing. When we opened bids with the general contractor and the bids came in higher, we went through the value engineering process. What he did say though is that he can continue holding that two-hundred and, well, basically eight-month construction period. I'm not sure what happens next as far as getting the lease. I think it has to go to a public hearing.
Yeah, that's what we were going to ask for.
What we would recommend is that we make these changes and then, with the board's authorization, send it to public hearings. So that does require.
In November.
In November.
And I don't know if there's any, an opportunity to expedite that a little earlier. And I'm, I'm saying that is because if your next meeting is November fifth.
Six.
Take, November sixth, the fifth, well, just say, take a week later to have the general contractor basically start construction. That gets a completion date sometime in July, July twelfth, somewhere like there for, if everything went smoothly. And it usually takes a month or two to go to final closing. That gets us up into September. Part of what the foundation really felt strongly about in making, if we're going to go forward this year, go forward so that the units could be available for the school district to, as, for, as a recruitment tool for some of the teachers they may be looking to attract. If we get into September completion, we may just need to put this whole thing on the shelf for a year. Hopefully, construction prices won't be as high as they were when we put out, put it out to bid. But, you know, timing is a factor.
Understood.
And so.
I don't think the board has another opportunity until November sixth to send it to public hearing because you don't need again.
Yeah.
And, and I would suggest too, I completely respect that. I'm dying to see this project, you know, in, above ground. But I did, I think at this point, when the public hearing, I think this is not the right place to accelerate and, you know, try to push. I think it's really important that, that all the decision-making going into this is very deliberate and going forward. And, you know, then after, once it's executed, then, yeah, full throttle. But the public hearing part, I don't think we should try to, you know, set another date or try to go around that.
I, I certainly appreciate that. I mean, we've tried to be as above-board and transparent in everything we've done. And certainly appreciate your, your support all along.
Yeah, you've done a terrific job.
And speaking of that, just one detail that we'll probably mention in the public hearing next month. In this lease is some requirements for us to have audits and have financial information come to us from the foundation. So we're going to have some significant oversight of this tenant. So it's, it's, it's a good gentleman partnership, but it's a one with a trust-but-verify type of idea.
Very good.
I would, Mr. Chairman, make a motion that the board approves moving forward with the ground lease, with the changes identified by the county attorney and authorize the county administrator and county attorney to prepare this for public hearing in November.
I'll second it. Motion duly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Betty, I guess you and I kind of mutually share item E.
I understand that some county employees have already been asked to assist with this year's Veterans Day ceremony. And, and in asking for that, you know, several years ago, the board granted support and use of the courthouse grounds in perpetuity for this ceremony. And I just wanted some clarification from the board as to what, what that meant by support. Just so that we could have it clarified for, for perpetuity in future years as to.
First, I'd like to say I am a veteran. I participated in the event last year, and I've been invited to participate again this year. And I fully and wholly, wholeheartedly support it. Where the rub has come in is that it's held on the day that the county offices are closed. And the committee for this event needs help in picking up stage materials in Urbana and bringing them out here, setting up folding chairs, doing the speaker system, printing off a hundred handbills. Is that about the extent of the? And I've had conversations with two prominent committee members over the last year about getting a memorandum of understanding, if you will, between the county and the committee as to what these obligations are going forward. Because if, if Kevin, for instance, is not available to do the sound, it would probably fall to Wayne because he's about to, another one in the county that knows how to deal with that kind of stuff. And all of a sudden, it's become complicated. So I have had a lot of conversations with particularly Annette Greenwood. And she has asked that I request on their behalf tonight, that this year, we do the same. has asked that I request on their behalf tonight, that this year we do the same level of support as we've done in years past, and that she will do everything in her power to get volunteers from V F W, American Legion, wherever else to pick up the slack so that we don't have the cost of county employees doing that. And this by no means is to be read that we don't wholeheartedly support this, it's just that, you know, our resources are stretched a little bit thin anyway, and when everybody is, is expecting to enjoy a day off, it's a tough time to, to, to bring them in. So, I'm in a position of requesting on behalf of the Veterans Day Committee for us to lend the same physical support this year as we did last, with the understanding that they're gonna work hard to get volunteers to pick up the slack next year and in years moving forward.
Are we, are we going to reimburse the county employees that do work on Veterans Day?
I would say whatever it is we've done in the past, if it's been with comp time, or, or, I, I don't know how that, I know, in Kevin's case, he's just volunteered and just gone and done it. I don't know about the, about the other folks moving stage equipment and all, and...
In the past, we've had inmates to, to be able to do that, and we have paid a guard for that.
Okay.
Last year, we did not have the inmates, we used our county maintenance people to do it.
The request is being made that we offer the same level of physical support this year, and whatever we compensated, whatever we did last year, we agree to do this year. I just wanted to make sure that the board and the citizens knew what we were doing with, with county employees and assets, particularly on the day that, that they were supposed to be off, and that we all understood what we were doing. So, I feel very good that Annette is gonna work hard to try to get volunteers through the interested organizations to, to carry this forward, because the county can't pick up the, the physical labor of different groups, meetings, and congregations, so...
Wait, and, oh, you finished?
Yes.
No, but I was just, if you, if you think about it, you know, with the jail help, I mean, if, if, if the county can't have employees to do it, if you can get the jail help, but don't, don't they help for the fencing down at Wings and Wheels all the time? Don't they get any, pay for a guard?
I'm sorry, Jamie.
But, but anyway, I'm just saying, you know, if, if, 'cause, you know, you gotta understand, you know, there's a lot of rich history here with Chesty Puller and different things like that.
Understood.
On the grounds here, everybody, no. And whatever help that can be done, because if you think about it, most legwork is setting up the stage and all that, 'cause nationally, you're gonna have both schools, both bands, from the high school and middle school, so that's kids and families coming here to, for a good event.
Yeah.
And, you know, everybody, like I said, I don't want everybody doing Investment Day, but this is probably one of the best places to be on Investment Day.
Agreed.
And if the county can support it any way they can, and have it done in the past, and if any, you know, and, and I guess Annette and Marsha and them will get together and check with the other two, American Legion, which are not very active, they have very few members, I can tell you that, and, but I'm thinking if everybody pulled it together for this, it'd be fine, because like I'm saying, the schools are involved, too, so, and, and I guess Annette and Marsha are heading up this, and, and...
They're the only two that I talked to.
Yeah, and, and they're heading it up, so really, the, the hardest work, legwork, is getting the podium and seating.
Yeah.
And that's what we're talking about. I mean, anything else, I mean, you can copy the print, the print, the print can be easy.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's no problem.
And P A, and, and Glenn, Glenn can run the P A if, if, if Kevin not available or I'm not available, I won't be in town, but I'm just saying, you know, if everybody working together for a good cause, this is what it's all about, and, and, you know, I...
Well, this started out, all I wanted was to make sure that the Board of Supervisors knew what we were doing with county employees on their day off.
Right, right.
And it evolved into the committee's willingness to look into volunteers and eliminate that, that rub, and that's where we, that's where we all are.
And my concern is that if we don't have county employees that volunteer on their day off to come in and do that, how is it gonna get covered? And if the board is willing to cover that expense?
Right.
Because we may, on the off chance in that instance, may actually have to hire someone if they're depending on that being done. I mean, Wayne's right, Glenn can set up that, the, the equipment, too. If both of them are gone, we're kind of in a, in a little bit of a spot. One thing I would recommend, and I want to say it publicly, is on the same day, I think it's Christ Church, has this wonderful Veterans Day lunch.
Actually, I think ours is gonna be on Friday before this.
Oh, it is? Well, in the past, it's been the same day. So if, if those two events can somehow coordinate, have the event here at the courthouse, and have some of the Christ Church folks kind of help out with both events, then when people finish with this event, they adjourn down to Chesty Puller's tomb at Christ Church and have a nice lunch. And it, it kind of combines, and you get a, a greater number of people that could help. And the only other thing I just want to state for the board's consideration is Bushy told me today that he has two deputies at four hours apiece that are hired to provide some assistance for the event, too, but see, they don't take Columbus Day, they work all the time. They come in and handle that special event.
It's one of our, one of, one of our special events days.
And we pay them through the special events fund to do that.
That they provide coverage.
Okay, well, do we have a consensus to do this year, as we did last year, with the hope of getting volunteers to take up any expense?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree. I was, attended the event last year, and I think it's a very worthwhile way to commemorate our, our veterans and, and county. I, I would go a little bit further, though, and suggest, yes, you know, go make it happen this year, I'm fine with that, but for next year, have a plan. So the committee says that there's something in writing the county can anticipate, this is what we need, so that there can be a plan in place, and everybody knows, oh, you were gonna get the P A, or you were gonna do that. That would be helpful to have, you know, done in December or January for next year. So, I would add that to the request.
So, we have a consensus to move on this year like we did last, with the idea that we will hopefully, at about a six-month period into next year, have a, have a plan of exactly what we're gonna need? Okay, moving right along to county administrator updates.
Do you have a copy of my report? And I won't be too biliminous with that, the only one thing I would add is, as the board is aware, I was lucky enough to be selected by H R S D to represent the small cities delegation on their behalf to the One Water Conference in Austin, Texas, met a lot of wonderful contacts, learned a lot of very useful information. I could say that as Middlesex County and the town of Urbana and the water authority worked through their water issues, there's nothing new under the sun. They're working through some of the same issues in Buffalo, Houston, Texas, of course, they were underwater during the conference 'cause of the tropical storm, but, no pun intended. A lot of innovative approaches to ideas out there, that we have access to that information now, so I was very thankful, and thank Ted Hennifin and Jay Dano with H R S D for sponsoring my attendance to that conference, of course, they picked up the conference expense and the travel expenses. I stayed a couple extra days to enjoy Austin and ate way too much beef barbecue, and we'll leave that alone. But if you have any questions with my report, I'm here to answer.
Very good. Number seven, county attorney update. Heather, nothing?
I do not have anything.
All righty, then, any supervisor with unfinished business? Hearing none, any supervisor with new business? Hearing none, we'll start on Mr. Mansfield's side with supervisor comments and reports.
I, I think I'll...
Okay. Wayne?
Like I said, I attended the Oceanic Foundation meeting, plus we got another one coming up, but anyway, you have, they had invited the Board Supervisors, R S V P, on Oc, by October the fifteenth, to the Sid Thrift Dinner Reception, October the nineteenth, so make sure that starts at six P M. for the captains and the grand marshal, the queens and the little misspats and volunteer to have that dinner on October the nineteenth.
Also, I did attend the Middle Peninsula Planning District, well, we went over a lot of things, but one of the most interesting things that I, I felt that was good was about the solar, as you know, D E Q had bailed out for, for solar farms for the erosion and everything, but like, like you know that our E N S, a lot of times, they bailed out, I mean, well, our E N S well ended up either have to sell it or the land, or, so they're gonna go back and revamp and look at that as a solar ga, guideline of how you're gonna decide, you know, where, where it's gonna fall. D E Q gonna wanna say one thing, and then we have E N S, and then, you know, who, who does it ultimately fall on, you know? And that's what, and a lot of times, I think the state wanna throw it back on locality, have them sell it with it, and they're gonna keep their hands out of it.
And... They've exempted a lot of them from the...
Right, right. And that's about it for my meeting, I would have, we missed our other meeting, meeting that we have, and every other month, my other meeting that we have, and that's it, I have for my reports.
All right, I'll stay in rotation this time. We had, on the eleventh, the Middlesex Water Authority met, we're grappling with easements, we've gotten, what, about two-hundred and some odd, and that might represent the low-hanging fruit, and we're debating about a firm to professionally handle valuations and so on to, to move forward with getting the rest of those easements. On the eighteenth, had a joint budget and finance meeting with the schools, sort of kicking off this next upcoming budget, dealing with, with a number of items, and one thing I'd like to, like to clarify was the expense of the school bus garage was a scientific, was swag, I won't say exactly what all that stands for, it's a scientific wild something, yes. The five-hundred thousand was put in as a placeholder, just so there'd be a number in there, it was not an estimate, it wasn't based on anybody's knowledge of what that would be, so we had one instance of something coming in below what we thought it was gonna cost, and the bus garage is gonna come in north of, of that figure, but none of that is carved in stone yet. All of us were in attendance at the public meeting in Deltaville on the multi-use paths, the meeting was held at the Deltaville Maritime Museum. One citizen spoke against, the, the response was very favorable, and Mr. Jesse suggested, and I know we all did, was hang back and be sure to talk to any citizens that might be sensitive to microphones and might not want to stand up and tell us how they really felt, and I think we came away feeling that the public is in, is in support of, of these projects, which I need to add, our countywide, the only reason it's starting in Deltaville is because of the health, safety, and welfare aspects of navigating Route thirty-three. The plan is for it to be in all five districts, as a matter of where we want it to be moving into the future. Yes?
Can I say one thing?
Yes, please.
Why are you saying that? It was just basically a resolution for, for grant money.
Right, to apply.
To apply, that's all it is, that, that don't mean that that's gonna happen.
No.
And, and, and that's coming from the V D, the V D, the state?
Yeah, an alternative, something.
It's an alternative, but, but it's, it's, it's a grant money, and it's for the whole of Virginia, by all words, and that don't mean that Middlesex gonna get that million dollars that they say.
And I think it's available every other year.
Right, every other year, but it just give you, give them the opportunity, 'cause if it doesn't go here, it's gonna go somewhere else.
Right. I'm sorry if I misled anybody to think that this was a definite go.
No, it's not, it just gives you the opportunity.
This was a go-ahead to apply for the grant.
To apply for the grant, that don't mean you gonna get it.
Right. And we had an airport committee meeting, and of course, on the twenty-eighth, we had Wings, Wheels, and Keels, I don't have any official numbers on it, looked like a good car show, I know one Ford Galaxy five-hundred that was in there was mighty sharp, outside of that. I, just as a comment, comments have been made about things not working in the past because not being able to get easements and so on and so forth, but we're a small community, and, and it's my hope that citizens will be community-oriented as we deal with water and broadband and multi-use paths and those sorts of things, and be generous with their easements for these things. There's really, there's, there's no big bucks to be had, it's just something that is gonna be good for the whole community, and whatever's good for the whole community is gonna be good for the individuals in the community, and I just would like to see, I'd like to see some of these projects that have not been able to make it in the past because of easements blossom and flourish on this go-round, and that completes my report. Ms. Whitehall?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also went to the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission meeting, and like Mr. Jesse said, the, the solar discussion is interesting, and there's a lot of prioritizing of solar at the state level, that's putting pressure on some rural communities, and the planning district was directed to kind of look at how, what kind of protections are available, or are options, and I think that was important, that was a big discussion. We also let the, reminded people that we're gonna try to get the five percent transient occupancy tax through this General Assembly Legislature, and that was agreed to. I want to commend the Airport Committee and Rusty Gill for Wings and Wheels and Keels and Betty, it's, it's another great community project that highlights our county, and when I was there, there were countless people from Williamsburg, Richmond, Fairfax, Lancaster, Westmoreland County, so when we draw people from other counties, that's, that's a good thing. The, just on that capital improvement plan, I would just encourage when that comes up to be updated, that, that everybody think about that, because we, we, we need good placeholders, if we're gonna put placeholders in the capital improvement plan, and I think most of those numbers are, have been relatively close to, to the expected cost. And I want to commend again our Economic Development Authority and Director, and just direct people, the Virginia Tourism Economic Impact News Release that went out last week, shows our expenditures in this county, it's ninety-seven million dollars related to tourism, with state tax benefits of two million eight-hundred and thirteen dollars, and it's just a reminder to all of us how important our tourism industry is in every aspect of the county, every part of the county, and we compare very favorably to nearby counties.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Question of our county attorney.
Yes.
We have a closed session next on the agenda. Am I safe in presuming that there could be action taken as a result of that?
Yes.
So, for the, for the public that wants to stay back and see what the result of that closed session is, there, there may very well be an action item when we reconvene. With that, Adam County Attorney.
Should be about fifteen minutes.
Yep.
Should be about fifteen minutes.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion from the board to convening in a closed meeting pursuant to Code of Virginia Sections two-point-two dash thirty-seven, eleven, A seven, and A eight. This is for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to the opioid class action lawsuit pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, and consultation with legal counsel regarding the terms of the negotiated class of said lawsuit.
So, move. Motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you, I'm gonna convene in the jury room.
Adam County Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to certify the following statement. To the best of the members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted in the motion by which the closed session was called was considered or discussed in the closed session.
Do we have a motion? So moved. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. County Attorney, would you comment, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to do so. So, what is up for the board's consideration is that we have received notice from the federal action pending in Ohio, something very unprecedented is occurring. There is a negoti, they're creating the negotiated class in any normal class action suit, but what's unheard of is the terms of this, which is that every locality in the United States, so for instance, Middlesex County, can participate in this class action suit without actually having to file suit, meaning, hire myself, or another attorney, or some firm to represent us, and pleadings, and all those court costs, we would be part of this class, class action, and if there is a settlement reached, and that's a big if, and if the settlement class, seventy-five percent of them voted to approve it, we could receive, we would receive a portion of that settlement, based on the criteria that they're gonna determine in the class.
But there was nothing, was no downside, no...
Right, this is simply, we got notice saying, hey, there's this federal action, we're gonna include you unless you tell us not to. If we include you, and if there's a settlement, and if the majority agree, you stand to receive X amount of dollars of that, and the monies have to be used to treat the crisis. So it's not just free money going to all the different localities, per se, it's money to go towards maybe working with social services on programs or the C S B, we have to use it to actually treat, address the, the crisis. I hope I summarized, I hope I didn't make that clear as mud, but that's the gist of it.
So, what we need is a motion to opt in?
Or just remain in.
Remain in, or to opt out?
Yeah.
Or to opt out?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to...
I make motion to remain. Remain in?
Yeah.
Motion's been made to remain in. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Duly seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And we do have public comment after, after our closed session. So if there are any other citizens that would like to address the board at this point in time, public comment period is open.
Hello, board members. My name is Russ Parkinson, and county employees as well. My sister and I are trustees of prospects and property that are adjacent to the airport. I spoke to you six or eight months ago, 2847 Grace Point Road. I wanna, I was glad to hear the, the chair mention community orientation just a little while ago, because that's what I wanted to speak with you about today briefly, is community We have an airport committee in the county that, that appears to have eight members on it. All appear to be advocates of the airport, from what I can tell, and it appears, looking at the roster of who's on it and their addresses, it appears one owns a home approximately a mile from the airport, as a crow flies. I think the rest, although a couple do own businesses right adjacent to the airport or right very close, most are located elsewhere, or, or I think all are advocates for the airport. So what I would suggest is, in a community-oriented fashion, I would suggest in a community perspective that there be some, if you're gonna have eight people on a, a committee like that, I think probably at least two of them ought to be advocates for the communities surrounding that have to live with, around the airport, or have homes around the airport. So that's the essence of my... Hi, man, I know you were trying to make some effort to reduce the number of members on the airport committee, and I would say that's probably a good idea. It's pretty large. But it seems like if you're gonna have eight, probably at least, you don't need just one person. I think you need two, to be fair, so it doesn't pile on to one person, to represent the other interest of the, the people that are adversely impacted potentially by the airport. I noticed in the Department of Aviation report, we have six aircraft that are owned by people in Middlesex County, or eight aircraft, excuse me. I think a number of those people are probably on the airport committee. Furthermore, I, I think some of the people that own the aircraft may own, I'm not sure of this, but they may own more than one as well. So it, it seems like, take home point, I got, you know, a million dollars outlay for an airport to benefit, you know, eight airplanes, seems like something that needs to be thought about pretty long and hard with it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll declare the public comment period over, and this would conclude our business for the evening, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion duly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed can just stay seated. Those in favor can get up.
Welcome to stay tonight.